Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Today is October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Oh, by the way, happy belated birthday to our Commissioner Andra Miller.
And us to you, Joan.
Oh, yeah, well, birthday babies. There we go. All right. Yeah, mine was a long time ago. Anyway, I'm just gonna call this meeting to order. It is currently seven oh seven in the evening, and I'm gonna ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you, everyone, and we're not gonna play ball. However, we are gonna ask our town planner to do the roll call. How about that?
Here.
Here. Here. Steve Biella, are you online? Okay, all right. That, yeah, that's right. Yep, okay, so we'll just have it as excused, I know with the job. Okay, the first item on the agenda is a GS, a CGS eight twenty-four municipal improvement referral. This is for renovating the police department by utilizing the former firearms training range and the Board of Education's storage area in the town hall. And so what do we have on this? Or are you doing, I think everyone received the packet, so we have the write-up here, the proposal. And new physical training center. Is that gonna be a full-scale gym? Do they know?
And I'm not on. There we go. Now everybody can hear me, hopefully. And we have storage area that has been town hall storage area and the food pantry, storage area, as well as some other town storage, and the Board of Ed's storage area, which are gonna be used to to renovate the police department, to add space for their needs. So I'm gonna pull up on the screen, basically, if you can see what it paled. In the plan that you've all gotten that plan.
Yes.
Um, this is a little more of a, you know, this is from the full-scale plan and in color. The police station is gonna expand into this area in white. Currently, the police station is under the wing of the building that has finance up through the registrar's offices and under the rotunda. And are, um, so they'll be now going into the storage area, which is near the elevator downstairs, as well as under the wing that the social services, water control, and economic development. Which is currently downstairs, is currently used for Board of Ed's storage.
Okay.
And then the Board of Ed will stay under.
Yeah. Well.
This has gone to bid. He's provided
Yeah.
documents. There'll be new men's and women's locker rooms, updated bathroom facilities that will be handicapped, that's accessible, one available for the public, the other for dispatchers. On that's, I believe, this area right here. And other renovations.
Yeah, very good, very good. Questions from the commission? All right. I'll entertain.
I'm sorry, the other area that is being transformed is the former firearms training area. Well, not just storage areas, but where they had a
Are they, are they still gonna have a shooting range down there?
I do not believe there's, I don't even believe it's been active downstairs.
Yeah, I don't think it's been, yeah, okay.
I believe so. They did a full, you know, it's been a full needs assessment, Public Building Commission, as well as the architects.
Yeah. 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 Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve a favorable referral under section eight twenty-four for the renovation of the police department by utilizing the former firearms training range and Board of Education's storage area in the town hall.
Okay, motion by Ms. Josie. Do we have second? Second by Mr. Zigmatt. Further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Okay, now on to commission business. We have a request to the town council for an amendment to the contract with FHI Studios concerning amendments to the zoning ordinance for development of proposed text amendments as identified in the FHI zoning review related to affordable housing as recommended in the POCD and AHP. And, okay.
So we do have Mahoney online.
Okay.
Probably speak more quickly to it than I can.
All right, welcome. All right, terrific.
Yeah, this, you know, we've talked about the zoning amendments, went through them with the commission. You have prioritized them and, you know, fine-tuned them, and now the next step is to draft the amendments. So we have money in the POCD update account for this, you know, that we can use for this purpose. Wanna advance this project while it's fresh in our mind. So this would be something that the town council will take up next week, so hopefully you would give a favorable support to this as we bring it to the town council next week. And then, before I stop, I don't know if it's possible to add an item, but there was another eight twenty-four regarding trails behind eight forty-eight Farmington Avenue, and if possible, maybe you consider adding that item. So that's all.
That item was handled last week, Joan.
Oh, okay, I missed that one. Sorry, guys, that's right.
That's okay.
Can't keep track.
Got it.
Yeah, we're cutting through items like a hot nice butter, yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Alrighty, so have we, any questions for Mr. Mahoney? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the request for amendment concerning proposal amendments, zoning regulations by FHI Studios.
That's okay. And we have a motion by Mr. Zigmatt. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Josie. Further discussion questions? All those in favor? Aye, those opposed, so moved.
Thank you.
Okay, no, thank you. Good job. All right, yes.
We did have one discussion item that the Economic Development Director asked to add to the agenda, and in the interest of the length of the meeting, so that he could
Oh, okay.
the day, if you don't mind adding it at this point. He's got an inquiry of a, or use at one of the industrial buildings on Old Brickyard.
Okay.
For earth contractors, and we're trying to determine the the use category, if they should, should be encouraged to pursue either a use variance or a text amendment to allow a contractor yard at that location. I believe, from what I've researched so far with our zoning officer, and it's very cursory, is that it would fall under the contractor yard. We do have provisions in the PI zone for contractor shops, which includes outdoor storage as well. You recall that those regulations were changed maybe two years ago on outdoor storage being somewhat allowed for contractor shops. But I do think this is a separate category of contractor yard, contractor and building, you know, construction yards. And I think earth contractors probably fills in that category, but Chris knows a little bit more about what they're looking to do and whether that would be a reasonable location. That, you know, what direction we should send them in. Obviously, nothing binding. This is not hearing on it. It's not a text amendment, it's not, you know, but we wanna give them reasonable direction.
All right, so you need a motion to add it to the agenda? Any, anyone? Okay.
So moved. I'll make the motion to add the discussion to the agenda.
Okay.
Second, all right.
Second, all right, so we have Mr. Rogan and then Ms. Josie again.
I have the map of the area. Here, actually. There was another map that
Yeah.
The map on top is another matter for the end of the meeting, if we get to it.
Okay, so that we can put to the end of the pile.
You want the ones that are stapled? We're just taking them off. Yeah, no, just.
No.
Don't give it to them.
Oh, Chris, shut down. If you want something done, you gotta do it yourself. Okay.
Well.
I think that's why I've been the moderator on six panel discussions since COVID started, so I think you're right. Yeah, you do it yourself.
Anyway, okay, so as we're passing these down and along the way, go ahead.
I have been working with Andy Rubik, Andy Hazard Contractors, longtime Berlin resident. Actually, one of the fire chiefs in town. His business does a lot of work. Actually, he did all the work on the ground, moving earth for the new development, which is now in the process of completing their second building down by the train station, Steel Center. His company does work throughout Connecticut, and it's a challenge for the fact that there really is no place for him in Berlin because it's really allowed on Christian Lane where there really isn't any opportunities. The property we're talking about is one-two-zero Old Brickyard. The property is actually not visible from Old Brickyard. You can see that it's literally behind the old Arkema facility, which is where they made the Plexiglas. So it's essentially out in the back, not visible from the road. And in my estimation, if we were to look at, okay, where is the best place to go? This would be it because it's hidden, it's in the back. The good news is he's also looking to potentially take the excess land, build a couple of buildings and lease out to other contractors. So, again, it's not a perfect fit because he's not under one of the listed contractors, again HVAC, plumbing. But for what he's doing, it is hidden. And trying to kind of get an idea from this commission, I would love, I've been working with Andy probably almost the entirety of the eight years I've been here to find a property. He is somebody that is, died in the old Berlin, and would love for him to stay in town and wanted to kind of get this commission's feedback on the best way to go because it doesn't look like it's a fit under the current regulations, but again, more for discussion because he, I mean, the nice thing too is he's got a lot of equipment, and he's one of those businesses that what he's gonna have on the property is gonna be more taxable than the building itself. So that's the type of businesses that we've seen work very well, that are career opportunities, so I will shut up now and get
Please.
All right, but how is it gonna be accessible from?
There's a driveway that goes down to Old Brickyard.
Look up on the screen. I pulled it up on the, on the screen, which I know is far away from you guys.
Oh, okay.
But there, if you go up Old Brickyard from Potter's Pass, before you get to the Ocean Star.
That was Arkema.
Arkema, yeah, building. There's a driveway that goes off along next to it, or a road, actually, it's part of the road. It goes up, and then this property is accessed over here. One of the considerations is proximity to the neighborhood that's over there. Our seven neighborhoods does above the property, and it's really a matter of red flags and/or directions that we should then, if you believe they have the option of use variances, you know, we might pursue that through the Board of Appeals or possibly a text amendment that would allow
So.
yards to be considered.
What's on the property now?
Currently, there are a couple of small buildings. It's been leased out by the owner to other companies. The owner purchased it thirty years ago as overflow for his business. He has since sold his business. And right now, the property, the tenant that was there has left. Right now, again, there's a small building they would use, but essentially a portion of it would be outside from larger equipment. They probably would have an area in the back that would be screened with potentially soil or something else for their business to take off of what Madam Planner had just said. Use variance probably makes more sense if you think this makes sense because adding this use in the PI would be detrimental because we have PI on Four-Rod Road, and I don't want, I would not personally wanna see contractor yards on Four-Rod Road because I think there's a lot better uses to go down there.
So contractor yard is just gonna be storage of heavy equipment?
Yeah, it'd be heavy equipment. He would use the buildings itself and then build additional, but it would be basically heavy equipment for his company, potentially some materials for his business as well, which is why, again, because this is so off the beaten path, it made the most sense for his type of business versus something that's very visible.
Will the equipment be eventually stored in buildings?
I think he'd like to do that. I mean, initially, I don't think he has the ability to build the buildings day one, but no, his idea was he'd like to try to get as much as he can on the property with within the buildings as time allows.
Commission, questions, comments? Yes, Ms. Miller.
Chris. When I think of a contractor yard, I think like Monbiel. Can you go out there and you have
Palates?
Yeah. Building material.
Yeah, no, he's not a builder, so he wouldn't have building materials. It would largely be the equipment, because again, he essentially, so if you have a property with a big hill on it, he's gonna take it, move the hill, make it nice and flat so you can build on it. That's essentially his business. So he may have some materials on site that are coming from a site or going to a site, as well as the heavy equipment that he uses. So no, he's not a builder, so you're not gonna see all, like, it's not gonna be a building materials yard.
And what is his last name, Andy?
HR. HR, thank you.
Rubik.
Rubik.
So again, and it's a business that essentially is home-based plus that I would love to be able to get him to launch because it's something, sorry, it's it changes. It provides a lot to the community, and I'd love to be able to keep him here because, again, owner-occupied contractors, manufacturers, there's really nothing better for us as a community because they have, again, the building, taxes, jobs, and like.
Do you have a letter from him?
Is he considering? I don't even know if it's possible because I'm not familiar with the topography as I'm looking at it there. Is he thinking about having an entrance ramp onto nine?
No, no, that's not something he'd consider, no. I don't think it's economical because of the
I just, I guess my concern lies with the neighborhood.
Yeah, no.
That exists.
I don't, the slope, I think, would be too much to Route Nine. I believe there is a lot of natural growth right now between buildings and where the neighborhood is, and I think if it came down to what he needed to do from screening, et cetera, I think we could work with him on that.
Yeah, I also concern that if you have heavy equipment, heavy equipment breaks down, it has to be repaired. And I can, concerned with oil leakage, and, I mean, we do have those, those ponds out there, and I know it's not great water and stuff, but still.
I think he would largely stay on the, on the front side of the property, that the ponds aren't until way in the back of this property, thankfully.
Yeah.
Anything he did, I think.
Yeah, but that puts them closer to the neighborhood.
No, no, absolutely.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's consideration there, but, I mean, I'm not opposed, well, anyway.
I didn't mean.
Yeah, go ahead. No, 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 you're not.
The letter he sent to us, if I may.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead and read it because I don't have my good glasses on tonight.
Earth Contractors is looking for a new home within Berlin to sustain and expand our business. We are an excavation and site development company that provides underground plumbing, foundation, and road building, and demolition services to municipal, commercial, and residential customers throughout central Connecticut since nineteen seventy-six. We are looking for a place where we can store our equipment and supplies, as well as build a shop and office. Being an excavation company, it is necessary that outside storage of both equipment and material would be allowed. Equipment that would need to be stored outside would include trucks, trailers, excavators, bulldozers, and other like equipment. Materials that would need to store would include, but not limited to, pipes, stone, fill, and topsoil. Our long-range goal would be to have a place that we could operate out of and also have a separate building to rent out to smaller businesses to help generate income, ideally contractor-type condos for landscapers, mason, electricians, plumbers, and similar type of blue-collar company.
Okay.
As dated, it's really, this is a conceptual, there's obviously, you've mentioned a bunch of concerns that we'd like to bring back to them as well for their consideration as to whether they think it's viable to get over any hurdles that
Yeah.
we've pointed out to them, or that you may have, as well as the zoning concern. And whether, and again, back to the discussion of whether text amendment would be desirable for possibility of a use variance. Again, use variances, they would have to show the hardship that the property couldn't be used for something else. I don't know the history of the property. We didn't get that far into it. I just submitted this.
Yeah.
June. Yeah, I think one of my biggest concerns has to do with sound and volume. So close to the neighborhood, you've got big equipment, probably starting early in the morning if they're doing excavations and so forth, or underground piping. They would get an early start, so they're starting their equipment to move them or delivery back and forth. That's a lot of heavy machinery sounds right next door that the neighbors didn't have originally.
Yeah. Anyone else? Well, huh, okay.
And I do know you, there are school kids, because I do see them, I have a friend that lives down in that area, and I can see they walk out to the corner from Brickyard up there to get the phone. People walking on that one.
Okay.
I think they're just, it ain't possible, right-hand side, because I think everything else
Yeah.
My other question is, how big is this parcel?
It's quite large because it goes off the north. Twelve point two six acres.
One foot equals four hundred feet on the map. Wow.
I suspect there's a considerable amount of wetlands towards the north. Because you have the
Yeah, 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 it looks like.
Our map layers are not accurate for
Yeah.
like wetland soils and flood areas, but
Okay.
I imagine there is, um, up there, you can see the dark area.
Yeah.
Oh, can't see because I'm not on the map.
I had conversations with the current owner a handful of years ago about potentially looking to develop additional land on the property, so I know that there is developable land that's dry as you get further in, so I know that there is development potential for buildings. But again, where the wetlands sit, I
Yeah, and because this is just a conceptual, anyone? Questions, questions, questions? Mr. Rogan, questions?
I mean, I think it's industrial zone. I think it works. Want to take consideration for the neighborhood.
Well, yeah, well, that will, that will come with the site plan, so. Tim, you had your hand?
Yeah, I, I just would think that on property like this, so close to R-seven zone, there would be, have to be a heavy berman alongside the R-seven with the you know, trees on, double trees like we normally do on that screening. Also, probably along Route Nine, just to keep the uh, site.
Equipment safe.
Well, to keep the equipment safe and see, you know, equipment, uh, well, those backhoes, uh, whatever, uh, you know, just out of sight.
Yeah.
Just out of sight. And I think of him being that kind of construction guy, he could build berms pretty easily.
Yeah, probably overnight. So, go ahead, June.
Yeah, just another thought is if it was just a Monday through Friday work, even, or will that spill into the weekends as well? People sleep in and and we time outside.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we, do you need a motion, or?
No, we just needed feedback for
Yeah, okay, just want the feedback.
The applicant.
Bring it back.
Can I actually have a quick question for the planner? Use variance, would that be similar to a special permit? Or what the commission would have the ability to ask for berms, trees, or is it kind of a gray area?
They can put decisions on a use variant.
Okay, I just wanted, because again, if he goes forward, I wanna make sure that the commission has the ability then to do the things you're saying. Because, again, if it's a use where you have limited abilities to guide him, then it's not what you're looking for. So, okay, just gives me a better idea then. Okay, I can get some some questions answered, and I may probably go out to the site myself tomorrow, just to better equip myself.
Okay.
If I remember, some of that land is low there, right? It's, it's wetland, I remember, it's low.
Yeah, I think it slopes downward towards the water.
Yeah.
Close up to the road, I do not know. I mean, it's been a manufacturer for a number of years, so really haven't
Been a long time since I've been on that property, so I don't know.
Oh, yeah, I know. Okay.
I think I will let him know that use variance, I think, makes the most sense. Again, I don't believe that contractor yard should be where the other zones are, particularly Four-Rod, because there are so many homes right and then I'll talk to him about the berman similar and see where we go from here.
Yeah.
I appreciate everybody's time.
Terrific. Hope you have a nice night.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we're good? All right, so we're gonna go into the public hearings, and I just wanna make sure that, Tim, I know that you were not here last week. You were excused.
Yes, I reviewed all tapes.
You listened to the tape? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
All righty.
Oh, four hours, whatever it was.
Five, but that's okay.
And you did
You erased the commercials.
Oh, yes.
As well.
I reviewed everything.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, so we're good on that?
You have a good talk to my wife today.
All right. Okay, so it looks like we have a compliment with us. We're all good. All right, so let's move forward. Okay, into the public hearing as we delve. It's applications of a Little House Living LLC prepared by Christopher J. Smith Esquire, Alter and Pearson LLC, submitted pursuant to Connecticut General Statute H-30G Affordable Housing Land Use Appeals. This is an application for a site plan approval to permit twenty units, multi-family residential community on real property known as sixteen seventy-six Berlin Turnpike. This is map twenty-two dash one, block one-one-four, lot ten. Okay. Oh, hi. How are you doing?
Good. For the record, my name's Megan Hope. I'm an attorney with Alter and Pearson, representing the applicant. Attorney Smith is still on vacation.
Oh, okay.
For him, I'm
I know. Well, oh, happy days.
So, just to indicate who you might be hearing from and who's with me tonight, I do have Pat Snow, the member of the applicant Little House Living LLC. Scott Hesketh is on Zoom participating in the meeting. He is a professional engineer with FA Hesketh and associate, specializes in our transportation portion of the application, and also Brian Miller, our planner, is also available on Zoom, should you have any questions for any of them. There were a couple of items that I wanted to put into the record, and then I'm happy, happy to open it up to questions from the commission or comments from the public. I know the public had indicated that they wanted to speak a little bit earlier this time because everything gets pushed late, so I'm happy to have them speak whenever the commission would like, but I did have a couple of items that I wanted to put into the record. The first is, at the meeting last week, I did indicate that Attorney Smith was in the process of serving the town relative to the wetlands appeal. That appeal has been served, as is required by the statute. And I did email this stuff to you too, Maureen. Did you get that? Okay.
Did you make copies for the
I do have copies, yep.
Okay.
For the whole commission, yeah. So I do have copies. I think I made ten, so. Sure. And as I think I indicated at the last meeting, we did get denied at the wetlands agency level. Attorney Smith did appeal that determination. We are moving forward and are entitled to complete our application with the zoning commission, and as I indicated previously, it is one of the factors you can consider when you do decide on the zoning portion of this application. The second item I wanted to discuss, as you probably noticed tonight, no one from our engineering firm was available for the meeting. Neither Zach nor Chris. Neither Zach nor Chris from Giuliano and Associates was available. They did prepare a letter that I did want to read into the record. Again, I did email this to Maureen, and I do have paper copies for everyone. So I'll pass that out as well, and then I can read that. So it's a letter dated October nineteenth, addressed to Maureen. It says, Dear Miss Juicy, neither Miss Georgia or Mr. Georgia or I are able to attend the continued public hearing on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three due to previous engagements. As such, I would like to state for the record, that is my professional opinion. That there is no conduct associated with the proposed site development that adversely impacts a substantial public interest. Specifically as it relates to stormwater quality and stormwater management. Snow storage, vehicular and pedestrian access of the site and emergency vehicle access to the site. In conclusion, from an engineering perspective, site design will have no adverse impact. On a substantial public interest, and this is respectfully submitted by Christopher Giuliano. He's a professional engineer, Ian Lee and Surveyor. His license number and seal are at the bottom of that letter that I just submitted. We did also receive additional correspondence from the Department of Transportation. If you remember at the last meeting, we had submitted. The materials we had submitted to DOT, we had gotten comments back from them. That all went into the record at the last meeting. We then got a follow-up letter from them. On the sixteenth, and I'm going to pass that out now, but essentially it approves. The permit, so I'll pass that out. All right, so this. Oh, there's only four? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. I do have one here that I can, you'll share it? Sorry about that. So this is a letter from. A letter from the Department of Transportation to Mr. Georgia Giuliano and Associates. He says, we have accepted your plans for the above noted subject received on October eleventh, twenty twenty-three, entitled the bungalows proposed residential development. At number sixteen seventy-six and sixteen eighty-eight Berlin Turnpike, Connecticut Route number fifteen, Berlin, Connecticut. An encroachment permit will be issued upon receipt of the following. A complete encroachment permit application needs to be submitted. And they reference the form number. No work on an affecting state properties to begin until an encro- encroachment permit is issued. A bond in the amount of twenty thousand dollars and the contractor's names needs to be posted, a certificate of insurance. Requiring bodily injury liability of a million dollars, an aggregate of two million dollars. And a check or money order in the amount of a hundred and seventy-five dollars made payable to the treasurer of State of Connecticut. This approval is good for two years from the date above. And that's signed by Daniel Di Renzo. He's a special services section manager for the Bureau of Highway Operation. And if you notice on the bottom, Maureen was CC'd on this correspondence. I know. It was a comment previously in the process that any communication between the applicant and DOT would include the town, so as you can see, that's already. Been part of the process. Okay. And the last item that I, I wanted to touch on was a comment that came up at the end of the. End of the meeting at the last, last week. We did get some comments about looking into changing the site plan, potentially. Creating additional buffer area or separating distance between the backs of the buildings and the property lines. I spoke with my client after the meeting, and our position is that we haven't changed the site plan. From what has been submitted in the latest plans, which were dated October sixth. Mr. Snow's position on that is, my understanding is, I believe, at the end of twenty twenty-two. He did submit another plan for this site that had a lower number of units than is previously. Proposed in this, this application, and it had greater buffer buffers. For example, those buildings on the. Westerly side of the property at the end of the Holly Court cul-de-sac. At that application had a forty-eight point five foot buffer as compared to the fifteen. That that is currently proposed, and his feeling is that he had proposed greater buffers, and it was something that the commission denied. So he didn't. Feel that going through that exercise at this point. Made sense because it hadn't worked in the past. Sure.
That's a good question. So if, if your statement is, is that the buffer was proposed under the original plan for forty-eight point five? And he's reducing it down to fifteen? I, I, I don't know how he expects fifteen to be more pleasant to us.
Sure, yep, I can answer that.
Just for the record, I have been sharing on the screen each of these documents as she's spoken about them, or just after she spoke about them.
Yep.
Yeah, how quick I worked.
Yeah, you did good. You could.
And just for the record, the, the plan that I passed out is she C two of ten. And it's the latest revision date on that plan that I just passed out for the record is October twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, and the plans were prepared by Halcy Pearson and Cassidy. Of Cromwell. So to answer your question, why we feel. The plan we've submitted with the site plan application that's currently under view, why we think it's appropriate in this context. As compared to what was previously proposed is really the difference. The difference of the standard between an eight thirty G application and one that isn't under that standard. So the standard is different. In the eight thirty G application, what we need to demonstrate is that there's not evidence in the record. That our application will have a adverse impact on a substantial public interest. And we feel that we've demonstrated that based on the expert testimony that we've put in by the different consultants. So it's not so much of whether something is more pleasing or less pleasing, but whether we can meet that standard. Under eight thirty G, so that would be the difference between, between the two plans.
All right, but under the eight thirty G plan that you have, how many units will be affordable?
Six units.
Six units out of twenty?
Correct.
Okay.
Thirty percent.
Why aren't all twenty affordable?
So we're, we're meeting the requirements of the statute.
Okay. So, all right, okay. Please go ahead with your presenting.
So that, that was, that was all I really wanted to go through, that I had notes from last time. I'm happy to answer any questions or to take questions from the public.
Okay. Terrific. Who, oh, Diane?
While you're still at the podium. We did request the certified consulting arborist report also. Is that something you have to present this evening?
No, I don't. I think we, we indicated at the last meeting that we would agree to that as a condition of approval, to have a review by a certified consulting arborist. Attorney Smith had indicated that at the last meeting.
What, 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 what did you say? I'm sorry.
So, so my understanding is, the meeting before I came here was there was a, a request for a. Certified consulting arborist, and we had a registered arborist look at the trees and. Put his report into the record that indicated that there wouldn't be damage to those trees. If there was activity within fifteen feet of them. And so that was put into the record. And then. At the last meeting, Attorney Smith said, indicated that we couldn't get a consulting arborist, just a registered arborist. But that we would agree to a condition of approval, that a. Registered consulting arborist would review planting plan.
So what you're saying is that if the plan's approved, then you'll go out and get a certified registered arborist?
Yes, that's what Attorney Smith indicated.
That's what you're saying, but not before that.
Correct. I, I don't.
Okay, I mean, I'm just, just for the rec, I just want to make sure that I'm clear and the commission's clear.
Yeah, the condition of approval would mean obviously after approval.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the commission at this point? We're in a public hearing, and I do know we have to close the public hearing today. So this is your chance to ask questions. Yes. Okay.
Just two things, Madam Chair, I think, for the record, Glenn Chalder from Planometrics, I think the first thing I wanted to point out. DOT letters relative to bungalows, which is the plan the commission denied. That was seventeen units, and now this plan's twenty units. So I think this letter without. To the plan for twenty units isn't really relevant to the application.
Okay.
It's an indication of the site and a driveway, but not with the applicants. Second thing I'd like to point out is. It takes me ten days before. The last hearing, I communicated with the applicant, Chris. I said, are we going to get a report from the consulting arborist? And Chris, the position that Megan just stated that, you know, we. Probably do this after the approval. I said, Chris, that's not my understanding of what the commission asked for or said. Said, you still have nine days to get consulting arborists. Chris showed up. Online at our last meeting last week. And repeated the same. Situation. So I just wanted the commission to be aware that the applicants have been aware for weeks about this issue. Indicated that they misunderstood. They corrected them three, ten days. For the last meeting and still didn't get them. So I don't know what a consulting arborist is going to be able to tell us. After the hearing is closed.
Yeah.
The issues the commission had were substantive, related to the viability of those trees and the applicable setback. So at this point in time, in the record, we have fifteen foot. Around the buildings is going to be a construction area, just going to intrude into the fifteen. Add those to the record.
Okay, thank you. Commission.
If I could just, before.
Oh, yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
To correct what was just stated, the, the letter that we just got from the DOT had to, has to do with the twenty twenty-three plans. It's not the, the previous plans. Dated, I just received it on October eleventh.
By May, Madam Chair, the.
Yes.
Email was submitted to staff today, had an attachment, site plan.
Okay, I understand the understanding. I had four attachments that I sent to Maureen. The first was the wetlands appeal, which I passed out. The second was the letter from Giuliano and Associates. The third was this DOT letter, and the fourth. Was the previous site plan, which I just submitted to talk about the buffers. It wasn't submitted with the DOT application. The DOT letter references the current site plans, twenty twenty-three site plans.
What was the reason again that the site plan was attached to the email?
I, what I attached to Maureen was everything that I handed out today. And I handed out this letter, and I also handed the previous site plan because there were questions about. If we would consider modifying the site plan to have increased buffers, and I chose the previous site plan. That was denied. Joe, that we had previously showed increased buffer, and we found that it was denied. So it's unrelated to the DOT. Letter.
So Mr. Hesketh.
It was an involvement. Letter, this was.
Not familiar with the DOT circuit? Traffic consultant's not familiar with? He doesn't know?
I'm following the question.
I'd like to know what this approval was based on.
Oh, I, I think.
I was under the impression, because this site plan was attached. With no explanation for its relevance, why it was attached in the email chain. Came through on my email, attached to this DOT eleven.
I, I included it more, or sorry.
I think I understand what Attorney Hope is saying. So I think she's, she's submitting a copy of the plan that got rejected, which, again, I, I. I gave it to Mr. Chalder to look at, I think in an October twenty twenty-one date on it. Okay, and, and she is indicating, I think, that the purpose of her submitting that. Tonight as an exhibit is in response to the comments that were made by the, by the chair at the last meeting regarding. You know, some suggestions as, as far as. Proposed or potential revisions to the site plan. Is that correct, Attorney Hope?
Okay, that's correct. And I think the other thing you can go back to is look at the back and forth that. Occurred between Giuliano and Associates and the DOT. The first. A letter that was, that we received from DOT was on September twenty-eighth. There was ten different items that they wanted us to respond to. We sent a revised. Letter on October sixth that was submitted at the last meeting, indicating how they had addressed those ten items. That was sent back and then received by the DOT, and then they sent this final letter. Responding to that. So that was the sequence. Yeah, it was.
Megan. Megan, this is Scott Hesketh. I can confirm that, yes, the, the, the plan set, which is before the commission. And the traffic impact report that was before the commission. Were both submitted to the DOT within the last two months. And those are the plans and reports. That the DOT has been reviewing. And not the single plan sheet that Megan handed in this evening for other purposes, so. Yes, the, the DOT did review the current plan set and current traffic report, and I believe those are the plans and report which they based their letter.
I misspoke. I want to apologize to the applicant, to the commission. I received the email late this afternoon on my phone, and the attachments all came through together, and it looked like that, that plan was the attachment to the DOT. So I misunderstood what was represented by the exhibits here tonight. Mr. Hesketh's testimony makes clear what Attorney Hope has said, so I apologize.
Can you just use microphones? I'm sorry. I, I know.
Where's the microphone? Yeah, okay.
No, it was attached to me, but I took off my outside jacket. Apologize for that. So, Maureen, I'm understanding that this is a private drive. Road, well, there's no map up. What I'm looking at a map here. This is a private, a private road.
And, and while you're looking at that, I will note that Stephen Biella Jr. has joined, although he's an alternate, not seated this evening. But I'll mark the time at that I noticed, eight fifty.
So he was on at least from eight forty-four.
Eight forty-four, good. As long as, I just want to make sure that one of us catches it. Okay.
So just.
Seven forty-four, thank you.
She needs to just get the right USB port, so just give her a moment. So you're asking for the current plans for this project? Right. Our, our regulations say, how wide is the road supposed to be for a private road? I don't know that answer. I believe twenty-four feet, and I believe they meet that. It's a big file, so it takes a moment for it to load.
So, so the regulations, it's 24 feet for two-way, two-way travel ways within a site development and the interior circulation.
And this is a one-way. Um, I, I thought this was one way in, one way out. It's not two-way, right?
I think you are correct.
Okay, just, just for an education for me, thank you.
And the, and I am looking for the plan set sheet, which on my laptop is a little difficult to find the width, the driveway width. I'm struggling to find a sheet that has the dimension. But I'll keep looking.
Yeah, I wasn't here the last time, but I did review everything, so, uh, I'll pick up a little bit question here. Okay, I'm looking up, soon I got this handed to me tonight. And that's not what, wasn't part of our consideration. But it's handed into evidence tonight. Uh, and now I can address it. This one was 48 feet from the backyard.
But that's the old plan.
That's your old plan. I'm just saying, 48 feet from the backyard. Eighteen units.
Yeah.
Okay, this is 20 units. You go tell me that you can't pull more, more than 15 feet off that back line? If, if this one had 18 units could do 48 feet, I'm sure that we could pull 30 feet off the back line with 20 units. And, and these 18 units, you know, the roads wi- widths are very wider than the first one. And all of a sudden, we're losing a lot in the map for two units. And I don't see the advantage of a A dash 30G. What the difference would be for the demand of more units? You know, because underneath the A 30G, A 830G. Why does the man, they, they, they're bringing it underneath the, that now? But this one was very similar in units. And a lot spread out more. This one, two units more and jammed. And, uh, right, right up to the property line as far as I'm concerned, 15 feet. It doesn't make sense and I'm not an engineer, but it doesn't make sense to me of that has to be that way. Comparing the two projects. And I wouldn't even compare the two projects unless I got this today. And I, I know this project off the top of my head, but having a map in front of me is a big obvious thing to me. The, I noted in the last meeting, they said that circulation here and they were go put car parking around the outside of the island. Okay, they put in a 30-foot fire truck. Fire trucks are not 30-foot anymore. Okay, the ladder trucks are up 40 to 45 feet. Got a tail swing, about nine-foot tail swing. Okay, so if you take a nine-foot tail swing coming around that corner, there's cars parked out there. Their tail swings go start hitting stuff. It's same, same as the other development down the street.
So let me, let me just stop you. So what's the, what's the average length of a fire truck? If somebody has a fire that they send.
The average length of the fire trucks right now is 35.
They're 35.
That's a pumper. But the trucks, aerial ladder trucks, ladder trucks are 40 to 45 feet now. Okay, carrying 100-foot of ladder on top of them. They're carrying, uh, uh, almost 150-foot of ladders in them. And again, I go with ladder in the back of the buildings, the same as I brought up on the other development.
Yeah.
Okay, you got 15-foot tree and trees behind there. Okay, if you go ladder the building, you're going to be at least a 20-foot ladder. Right? And every, every four feet you go up, ladder got to come out one foot more.
Okay.
So it's got to come out at least five feet. Okay. But you come out five feet, you're, you're into those trees almost. There's no workspace between the ladder and the trees, basically. Okay. And the other development, 40 feet high, use the same formula. You're at least 10-foot out. And, and then you've got to have working space to run around the back of that ladder. You know, the ladder can't be on the slope and slide out like that. So the nine-foot that would, that, the, you know, I, I refer back to the, no, I won't, I won't go that one. Now, you're right, I'm on this project right now. But, uh, it's the same conception back there. You know, safe and well, health and welfare of the people in the units. It's my top priority. Okay, being a fireman for over 40 years, pulling bodies out of houses.
All right, well.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, just saying.
Yeah.
Mine, mine is safe and welfare of the people, okay? And I look at every piece of the, the development and saying, is it safe to, to live there? Okay, if you can't get into the back of the building, get on the back of the roof, get on the roof of these buildings safely, I have a problem.
All right, let me ask you one other question because you said there was a nine-foot swing. What do you, what do you mean by that?
Tail swing. The axles, the trucks here, the truck goes over the, the back axle, nine feet. So when you turn, that nine feet goes like this.
Oh, so you go, you could take somebody out.
So, so there's a tail swing maybe of four or five feet. Maybe a little less maybe, but depending on the truck is, is designed, that swings out.
Okay.
When you're taking a sharp corner. So that's, that's the, the, the thing I said about school buses too, you know, they got that long tail in on them and that's a lot of swing. So when they're swinging on this corner over here and you've got a car parked over here. Okay, they're going to have to swing out. That means it goes up over this curb and wherever there's, whatever's there.
But I think the testimony was is that the, the kids were going to walk to the turnpike to.
I know, I know, I'm talking fire trucks on this one right now.
Oh, no, we're talking fire trucks, but that's also a concern.
But, but, uh, you know, it's just when you're 24, 26 foot. And I think you just, who says 24 feet wide is a.
24 feet wide is a private road.
Private road. Okay. You're only talking 12 feet. The, the, uh, trucks are now 110 inches wide. 120 inches wide. Uh, so, and 45 will be what long? There's, there is a tight squeeze over there.
Yeah, they're going to have to.
And they're moving in not slowly.
Yeah.
They're, they're, they're excited and coming in.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for that information.
I did just want to know for the record, um, my understanding is when the plan originally came in, we indicated that the cars for the units would park one in the garage and one in the driveway. So per unit, there were comments that perhaps more parking would be needed. And I believe that is why Zach, um, on the October 6th plans indicated that there were 13 locations where a car could park. So that's not something that we feel like we need. So if there is concern that you'd like to use that whole width for drive aisle only, we're open to that, not parking cars there. But that's kind of the, you know, the genesis of how those cars got there.
Okay, all righty. Any other questions at this time? Yes, Maureen?
I just want to make a clarification on Mr. Miller's question with regard to the driveway width. We did find on sheet 13 of your set. Sharing it now, but the dimension of 12 feet is given for the width on the interior side showing where the cars are parked and we scaled off and it's another 12. So it's a total of 24 of pavement that's there. There at the northerly driveway has the 12-foot and we did just scale it off. It appears to be 24. Is there any questions, Commissioner?
Okay.
Just trying to make sure.
All right. Anyone else?
Come back out because this is the one with the turning radius that the handles are shown when you were just talking about. So to that screen so that anyone participating knows what everyone's looking at.
And, and if you look at there, you can see that's a 30-foot, already said in the, in the thing. And if you look at the 12-foot width and that, that width of that pumper going through there, you only got eight inches each side of that pumper, 12-foot section.
How wide, there's typically stabilizers in there, how wide?
Well, stabilizers go out, stabilizer on a, on a truck will go out another three feet each side. So you're six foot wider. You know.
What do you mean, six foot wider?
The stabilizers for a ladder truck go out to the side of the truck and come down.
So how wide is, how wide is?
Now, now the truck goes six foot wider than it was. It's 110 inches plus six foot is whatever it is.
My math is bad.
My math, my math is not doing in the head real quick.
I know, I know. So what do we?
110, 110 plus six feet is.
It's basically 16.
Seventy-two. 182 divided by 12.
I don't have my phone. And I don't have my paper to work it out, 182. So what are they going for? But probably around. What?
Yeah, 12 feet is 144, so you're over the 12-foot span.
If it pleases the commission, it's my understanding that this plan was shared with the fire marshal. And that the, the vehicles shown on the turning movement diagram were vehicles suggested by the, by the fire marshal. And that I believe his only comments received by the commission to date were that he'd like to meet with the developer to determine the location of the fire hydrants at the appropriate time. So I, I know we're spending a lot of time discussing fire access, but I believe that the, uh, the gentleman in town most responsible for that is, uh, has reviewed the plans and has, has indicated he has no concerns about it.
Okay. This is a. Ms. George, hold on, Ms. George.
Um, at the last meeting, that was not the testimony that I recall. Because the question was asked, how? The question was asked about the length of the fire truck and how that was determined. And the response was from a gentleman who's not here this evening. Zach.
Yeah.
Saying that the 30-foot was a standard truck size. That was not information that our fire marshal provided. That was a standard measurement, according to Zach.
That is the standard 30, 35 feet is the standard pumper truck. Bringing a ladder truck or anything like that in there, uh, that's going to be another problem. This drawing is on 30-foot pumper truck. You know, I, I understand you, sir. I do have some expertise in the fire service, over 40 years in training firefighters. And I trained the fire marshal in this town.
Okay, thank you. I do know that we're in the public hearing and although the commission has been basically sharing its thoughts, we do have a lady in the audience who wishes to address the commission. So with everyone's okay, um, we will go ahead and move to the public comment.
Can you hear me? Yes, Lori Budney, 242 Weathersfield Road. I have some emails here from, and copies. I know. Essentially, at last week's meeting, I'm, I'm going to support Mr. Ziegmond here in the conversations that I had this week. At last week's meeting, the applicant's consultant presented a diagram demonstrating that a 30-foot fire truck could navigate the proposed development street with tenants' cars parked along the perimeter. That led me to verify the dimensions of Berlin's own fire trucks. I did so by attempting to contact the fire marshal, Steve Woznia, but I was referred to the deputy fire marshal, Rich Kopp, as the fire marshal is on a leave of absence until the end of this month. He will return October 31st. The information I gathered through conversations with the deputy fire marshal was later documented in the email I presented now to the zoning board this evening. It states that the Berlin fire trucks range from 35 feet to 45 feet and indicates the roadway of the proposed development is to be marked as a fire lane with no vehicle parking permitted. And as you can see, he's got the pump trucks and the ladder truck at, I think it's 45.
Yeah.
45 feet.
Thirty-nine and 45.
So these, these findings are significant and they are particular to the town of Berlin. And I believe they would render the applicant's current proposal to be non-compliant with the town requirements. Thank you. Is there any questions?
Questions for Ms. Budney? Any questions? No, but thank you. Anyone else from the public who wishes to address the commission regarding this application at this time? Again, this is the last day for the public hearing. So if you would like to just, yes.
Good evening, Chairwoman, VLE commissioners and fellow Berlin neighbors. I again want to express my appreciation for the commission's diligent efforts in safeguarding our community's well-being. We recognize your time and commitment and your efforts do not go unnoticed. The proposed development at 1676 Berlin Turnpike raises several concerns. The units are too close together.
Let me just start, I'm sorry, can you state your name for the record?
Sorry, Patty Bergio, 27, Holly Court. The proposed development at 1676 Berlin Turnpike raises several concerns. The units are too close together, diminishing the resident's privacy and overall quality of life. The density of the units on the land parcel is excessive. The development's proximity to a school bus stop poses a significant safety risk, particularly given the fast-moving traffic on the Berlin Turnpike. Inadequate parking will lead to congestion and inconvenience. A lack of space for recreational activities and its closeness to Holly Court raises worries about community well-being. Moreover, the additional water runoff potentially straining an already flooding culvert and increasing flood risk is a major environmental concern. It poses a significant threat to our neighbors' homes and belongings, compounding our concerns regarding this development. Lastly, there is a risk of negative impact on existing trees, which could harm the aesthetics and ecological balance of our neighborhood. These issues underscore the adverse effects this development could have on our community. We implore the commission to vote against allowing this building to proceed, prioritizing the safety and welfare of our community. Thank you. Martina Bergio, 27, Holly Court. Witnessing the distress that my parents and neighbors have endured due to this proposed development has been deeply unsettling. The fear that grips us when the culvert overflows during rainstorms is profoundly disturbing. As my mom just rightly pointed out, this development seems fundamentally flawed. Attempting to cram too many houses into a small piece of land, which strikes me as impractical. This development's closeness to our peaceful and well-kept Holly Court only amplifies concerns about congested parking and increased foot traffic on our street to compensate for the development's lack of parking and recreational spaces. What worries me most is how the children in these homes will find any opportunity for a normal childhood without space for them to enjoy. I strongly implore you not to grant approval for this proposed construction. My parents and neighbors have devoted immense effort to sustaining a safe, well-kept home and community for our families. We have significant concerns regarding the many negative impacts that this development could introduce.
Good evening, it's nice to see everybody again. Um, I am Patriot Riley, I'm from one hundred Peter Parley Row. We have talked about this application and tried to make it work. It's tight and flawed. We have gone north, south, east and west to make this comfortable all the way around. It's mostly not going to be comfortable for the people that are living in it, sad to say. It would be, uh, very detrimental, I think, to, um, especially to kids. So I really humbly like to ask that you deny this application. It's just too tight. It's like putting, you know, you're gonna put a whole bunch of houses on a little postage stamp and say, yeah, everybody's gonna be happy with that. People are not gonna be happy, it's just, and it shows a terrible example for what we want to show as our example for living in Berlin. It's just not, it's not feasible and the water situation, we need to honor that wetlands, that fifty-foot wetlands. You, you know, you can say you can build up to within fifteen feet of it, but I think it's just not a good idea, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And I, I think I'm a pretty good clear thinker, for the most part. So anyhow, I thank you very much for listening.
And anyone else? And I'm gonna go over to the Zoom. I think we have, uh, right now we have Sonia Urceoli, I believe, who has their hand raised. Would you like to address the commission?
Hi, yes, how are you this evening?
I'm fine, thank you, how about yourself?
I'm doing well, thank you. My name is Sonia Urceoli, seventeen Holly Court. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us today. I'll try and keep this short since inland and wetland did deny the application. Um, I have just a couple of concerns I want to address. The space for the development is realistically too small to fit with snow alike in that area. It'd be too cluttered, not enough green for family, friends, children and animals. You see, when you look for a house, majority of the house could be changed, kitchen, bathroom, even the layout. What you cannot change is the yard size and location. For example, when we bought our house on Holly Court, we solely bought it for the yard and cul-de-sac. We knew we could change our home, we couldn't change those two things I listed above. From experience, personal and with experience with many different clients, yard and green space do play a huge role as to where people decide to live. Schools and buses, is there enough space for additional students in, that are gonna be in the, or children in these houses to go to school? Will the school need to be rezoned? Do we have enough teachers? For example, this is just an example, if one, every house has one student or child in it that's around the same age, give or take the same year or two, then a whole additional classroom would need to be added to Willard. Was the board of ed contacted or spoken to to see if the schools upgrades or even if there's enough space available? Buses, I did hear earlier this evening that the buses will stop on the Berlin Turnpike to pick up any children that live in this development. The safety of the buses with the students in the area are a concern. The Berlin Turnpike, as we know it for many years of experience, is not a safe place to get on and off. An accident had recently occurred this past week with middle school kids with the bus on the Berlin Turnpike. It was on Facebook, on the Berlin page. My, my concern is my child will be on that bus and that does not sit right with me. Safety, we bought our house due to the cul-de-sac. Our children ride their bikes there down the street almost every day, to the point where they put a race car track made of chalk at the end of the cul-de-sac. We barely have any activity on the street and if we do, it is someone delivering something or someone who lives on the road. With the development that snow wants to put up, my concern is that our street will not be safe for the children to play on, due to the cars driving up and down. Due to the lack of space in this development, all the houses, I'm sure, without a doubt that the cars will park on our road and try and walk up or try and cut through. Um, my child's safety may be put at risk with my neighbor's kids at well, a- as well, sorry. Lastly, for safety, if they do park down on our street and cut through our neighbor's yards, that is a huge liability for our neighbors. If the person gets injured while on my neighbor's property, cutting through or going up to see their families and friends, should our homeowners on our street be liable for their injuries? Um, just because snow didn't want to add additional parking for birthday parties, holidays, graduations, or normal par- normal parties that more than one person may have at a time. In conclusion, with the amount of houses and all the questions still not answered and the risk that could be on for the surrounding neighborhood and neighbors, I think this application should be denied. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I think the gentleman to the back had his hands raised up and thank you for your patience. Good evening.
Zdowski, the owner of Berlin Auto Center.
Yes.
Uh, I've got two issues, uh, water drainage, gonna go into the swale and down into my pipe. They can't tell me how many gallons water gonna be going flowing into that pipe. And if there's way too much, it's gonna be gurgling out from the bottom of the storage units and effectively flooding my lower units. Who's gonna pay for that? I mean, there's people in there with very expensive items in there and they wanna keep them safe and dry. Another thing that horrifies me, there's children in here, the pipe is eighteen inches wide, uh, circle diameter. What if they walk in there, crawl in there? Whether they're animal, it's gonna happen, they're by, they're gone. Get him out. That horrifies me. He wants to pour all this water down him. Is he gonna have, be forced, be forced to seal it up? And there's no water gonna be going down there.
Can I ask you a question about that swale? Cause I think I brought it up at the last meeting, we had talked briefly on it, I just, because you are the owner of part of the swale. Did you install that swale yourself? Okay, so when you purchased the property, this, it was already adj- it was there, was the pipe there as well?
Yes.
All right. Um, and, and when you purchased the property, were you told about the swale? I, I mean, I did, was it done by the previous owner or is it something that the town put in to help with the runoff?
No, I think it was done by the previous owner Vic Forrest, he, he did all that.
Oh, okay, all righty. And you said that the pipe is basically eighteen inches wide?
It's eighteen inches in, in diameter.
Yeah, okay. And is it have a covering on it at all? No, so there's nothing. So when the water runs off the site, does it, how does it, does it meander down like a hill and then get caught by it or?
For, for, uh, parking lot has like a little six-inch swale, it's about this wide, wide as a shovel. And it goes down there and just kinda disappears with a brush. And it very seldom flows into that pipe.
Mm-hmm.
It's been creating its own little wetlands down in between the properties, so it just kinda sits there. Um, the kids will gravitate to it. Young kids would just go water, where's the water? They're gonna go right to it and.
Okay.
Happens to them.
And it, it cuts over through and then it, it, does it empty out into the street to the catch basin or?
Their first catch basin, there's a series of three catch basins on my property on the lower units. Goes through each one of them and then empties into, uh, metal lane underground.
Okay. But the catch bases are on your property?
Yes, they are.
So obviously you must maintain them, keep them clear, clean and everything.
No, it would be cluttered.
All right, and your storage units are basically?
Ground level.
Okay.
Lower ones are ground level.
Yeah, I, I'm aware that they have the, you have the storage units behind the business. Well, it's a long metal rail, metal lane, okay. All right, thank you for that. All right. Anyone else? John, 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 I'm sorry. Can you just sign your, um, your name and just write your name and address, please? Thank you. Our cadet. Our police cadet.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you doing today?
Hi, hi, Sam Rice, uh, thirty-eight Holly Court. I just wanted to state for the record that my wife and I have a new thing called, uh, date night at the P and Z.
Oh, wow.
Know what we're gonna do when?
That's pretty cool. Oh, I don't know, you can always come, you can always come back.
It's been. This has been quite a journey and I certainly have a, a lot of respect for the job that you all do and I, I appreciate your time. Um, I would like to reiterate for the record that these are not little houses, nor are they bungalows. Uh, and these are crammed units on a lot less than two acres in size. I state this again because it comes off as a guide, steer our minds away from what's really transpiring. And I don't wanna lose, I don't wanna lose track of that. So it begs to ask, you know, what else, what else are, you know, as a guise? What's becoming clear is the builder is not willing to compromise on this project or even consider what the town is looking to maintain. I'm not referring to shutters or, or where we place snow either. The first attempt failed and, and, and this is now an appeal. Appeal didn't have to come with the eight thirty G trump card, but it did. Why is that? Um, I understand that, uh, Attorney Smith is doing his job, but we've listened to hours of engineering testimony under, under the watchful eye of the eight thirty G attorney as, as, as if this is some sort of trial. Um, and, you know, I feel we're a little bit of a disadvantage slightly, but, you know, we've definitely pleaded our cases strongly, I feel, you know, for the things that we're concerned about. And, and some of those things are, you know, unfortunately, and I said this, uh, at the inlands and wetlands, uh, meeting, you know, the, the folks on, in the neighborhoods become the subject matter expert. We see what, what has transpired over the years, we see the flooding that's increased, we see all these things that are happening. And so, you know, what's gonna ha- end up happening is we're gonna be, uh, you know, experiencing this even more, we're gonna experience the flooding. Um, uh, um, and the unsightly structures that are left behind. Not, not to mention, uh, you know, the bus accident that just happened recently. Um, and then I think I mentioned in the previous meeting that, um, you know, there's a, a stoplight where, right where Worthington Ridge is and it, and it's only a couple hundred feet from where this, where this development is. And that's just gonna create all kinds of chaos as far as traffic is concerned. And, you know, was that considered as well? You know, today we find ourselves at yet another appeal, this time it's at the hands of inlands and wetlands. I have to ask, when does it end? You know, does the appeal process continue until the builder gets exactly what he wants? Is that how, is that how this, is that how this goes down? I mean, you know, shouldn't there be some sort of, uh, middle ground reached somewhere? Or does eight thirty G become the ultimate hall pass, you know, to do whatever, whatever he wants? You know, as members of this community, we have stated that we don't want house, we never stated that we don't want houses built on this small lot. We, we are simply stating that we want to continue safe, safely nourish the sense of community that this town has always offered. It would be a shame to step over the recommendations that the Berlin Land Trust and the decisions of P and Z in the past and, uh, and the inlands and wetlands that we, that have already been voted on. Think it not strange that we've suffered through a biblical storm recently and also a recent bus accident while going through this process?
Hmm.
I mean, for me, that's all kinds of little red flags, you know, popping up. You know, and, you know, so the unfortunate fact is we're gonna be left with the results of, 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 of the, uh, this big project. And, um, I think it's just bad and, 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 you know, bad for the community. And if it was something smaller, something like, like little houses or bungalows, that might work at a smaller scale, but, um, I think, I think you should definitely consider not passing this.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else really quick? Hey. Yeah. Yeah.
We like it.
I don't know that they wanna look at us. Oh.
Maureen, I have your copyright, I have, I have.
Okay.
They'll hand me that one at the end, I'm sure. Linda Hall Strand, forty-eight Holly Court. Been a long road. I, I hope we're done, but you never know. Um, but we, we all, we do appreciate all the time. I mean, you, you know, we've, we've spent a lot of time, but we know you guys, it's a volunteer position that you guys have here and it's, it's amazing. I mean, just what we've seen, it's amazing, you know, all the other time that you spend sitting up here.
Does that mean we don't get paid? What? This is our date night, yeah. I'll tell my husband. Wait a minute, is he online? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Little.
Um, neither the applicant nor his engineer has answered the question as to how storm water from two infiltration systems on the south and southwest sides of sixteen seventy-six Berlin Turnpike will be magically piped uphill to the swale where it will be directed next door to the storage unit's storm drain. How can storm water move uphill? My guess is all that storm water will be exfiltrated and careened down the slope and instead making my house a target. So far this year, we have had four serious storm events on September thirtieth. Here's the latest that I, that you have. We had three point eight inches of rain dumped at both inland wetlands and planning and zoning. Mr. Georgina called the August eighteenth storm, which dumped three point four inches of rain in seventy minutes, a five-hundred-year storm and cannot be planned for. On April twenty-third and twenty-four, three point three-one inches of rain fell and on July second, three point three inches of rain fell. These storm events are becoming our new normal. Why are there no emergency spillways for the two smaller infiltration systems on the plan? If there are no design upgrades, these two infiltration systems and the swale will be overwhelmed by serious storms and this concentration of storm water will pour down the slope. It will not be distributed naturally into the soil as it has been to, to date. The Coltech one eighty HD infiltration system needs to be designed for higher capacity than a hundred-year storm. Is the Coltech infiltration system with its three locations the most effective? Will it keep fifty-one and forty-eight Holly yards and lower levels flood-free? Will it keep storm water from overwhelming the wetlands with its level spreader? We again asked the town to hire an independent engineering consultant to answer these questions and evaluate the storm water drainage plan. Storm water from the August eighteenth storm overran the stream in Culvert be- behind Colley, Holly Court, creating flooding for lower lane property owners. Excess storm water was dumped into the wetlands from the Turnpike. Catch basins on Peter Parley and Holly pipe storm water into the stream in Culvert, overwhelming it and flooding some Holly yards. The catch basins on lower lane were overwhelmed and backed up into the street, flooding yards in the lower level of one house. We again asked for the town to provide, provide and institute a successful drainage plan for the stream in Culvert to protect the neighborhood from further disastrous storm water events. The next, I have more pictures. So the picture on the left is a standard zig, dig zone, which is four feet for a foundation. And the second picture here is, is I took from. And the second picture here is, is I took from, you can see the driveway right down here in the, in the left corner. It's fifty one Holly's driveway. And so I was trying to capture up here. You can, you can see the pine trees for sixteen seventy six in the distance and the black plastic for the erosion control down below. And then I tried to do this little diagram. Cause I'm back to the trees. So we've got the property line and we're going to build fifteen feet with the units. From the property line. Well, the, as, as we looked at last week and which is on the plan, you know, my, the trees over by me are roughly three feet in from. On, on sixteen seventy six's property. The dig zone is four feet, so fifteen feet minus the four foot dig zone. Now we're down at eleven feet. And the, the trees are at three feet. That's an eight foot differential, which means all those trees are going to die because of the dig zone. The next page. Is actually, it came from the. The May twelfth letter from Ian Cole. So it's in that package, but I just wanted to do a separate page. So you can see at the bottom, the cul-de-sac and fifty one's on the left and forty eight is on the right. And you can, fifty one is probably fifteen feet closer to sixteen seventy six, the property line than I am. And you can see this is the old, the old motel and the units there over by me. It was thirty, thirty feet and then gradually went down to twenty two and a half feet with the last unit there in, in a line. So now, you know, we're going to be at fifteen feet. So my neighbors Irene and Jimmy James. You know, with the height of these units being thirty six feet because it's ten foot differential. These people are going to be looking down on their deck, on their, on their driveway and anything they're doing in their backyard. I mean, it's, it's more open than where over I, where I am. And the last thing. I wanted to talk about was. Can't find the right sheet here. We're going down memory lane. It looks like we were anyways with, when they brought in the last year's plan. You'll remember at the October seventh, twenty twenty two planning and zoning meeting that I brought up ten errors on the C seven site plan sheet. Among them listing the wrong owner twice of sixteen seventy six Berlin Turnpike. And the property located in Rocky Hill listed five times. No mention of Berlin whatsoever. No one had ever bothered looking at that sheet, even though there were several revisions to the site plan. The applicant pled with the commission to give him a chance to fix the errors. When the commission could have denied the application for wrong and incomplete information. You gave him two weeks. You gave him a break. He had the audacity to sue the town when you denied the application. At the October twentieth, twenty twenty two meeting, I said that number forty one on the C six site plan sheet. Under site plan notes stated, the fifty foot residential buffer shall be staked and demarked. I turned and I thanked the applicant for the fifty foot rear buffer. This also is on my written statement in the twenty twenty two file. You will find my verbal statement on the Zoom meeting recording at two hours, twenty two minutes and roughly forty seven seconds. Wouldn't you think that the guy would have fixed this? Wouldn't you think that his new engineer would have read his own page seven sheet? Nope, not a chance. We are imploring the commission to affirm and uphold the number forty one statement under site plan notes on the twenty twenty three page seven revised site plan sheet. Maureen, maybe you could pull that up. And it states. The fifty foot rear buffer shall be staked and demarked with permanent markers. Visible to equipment operators prior to the construction. And shall remain until the CO has been issued. This statement was on the original twenty twenty one site plan and all revisions. Continues to exist two years later on the twenty twenty three site plan application and should be accepted as is. Forty one, left column under site plan notes. It's been there forever and I told the guy last year and he never did anything. And here we are again. And you gave him a break last year. I hope you're not going to do it this year. Please uphold the fifty foot rear buffer. It's unbelievable to me. And now we're, you know, new players and nobody looks at anything. I mean, I even tell him this last year and it's verifiable. You know, you can look it up. I just checked again today to make sure. Highlighting it's not working, I'm sorry. But it's this right here. Anyways, after all that. The only other, you know, the couple of other things we. We haven't talked about tonight. There in the units, they'll be thirty six feet in height because of the ten foot differential off the street. We never talked about a fence last year. That was part of the deal. And. You know, it's, it's actually, they're talking forty eight, forty eight feet. I, I believe it's forty six and a half feet. From the boundary that was the line that, that they had last year where the units were going to be on the, on the rear side. And then, you know, twenty five on the others. You know, all we wanted was a couple less units. So now, now, now the guy's trying to, trying to punish you all, I guess. Anyways, it's too bad that we couldn't have come to some resolution back then. It is what it is.
Ashley's coming up here tonight. I just want to say something. It's, it's amazing that private citizens, non engineers. Can pick out this stuff on these maps. And be correct and, and, and do their homework. And I praise you for that, you know, to do your homework. I never caught it. And it's just dumb fun to me that engineers drawing these maps can do those stuff, you know?
I, I agree. Okay.
Good evening. I'm, I think I'm a little more awake than I was last meeting.
Okay, alrighty.
See if I can get this out.
Ah, yeah.
Sherry Rice, thirty eight Holly Court. I just wanted to address a couple of things that were said in the last, at least one that was said in the last meeting. And Chairman Viele had mentioned, we, there's been a lot of talk about green space and stuff. And the engineer sort of, in my opinion, snarkly snapped back and said. Oh, we're, why are we talking about green space with snow? Well, if we're talking about children in a development, I don't know, I have children and they like to play in the snow. So green space is still something that is a concern when it snows because you need, kids want to build snowmen, they want to build snow forts, whatever the case may be. So that is something that I wanted to point out that, that I heard. Throughout this whole process and now, I mean, we're months and months down the road in this. And again, as with my neighbors and other citizens, because not everybody out here lives on Holly Court. These are people, residents of Berlin that, that see this and come out and want to say, and I'm sure we probably would have. More people here if, I mean, there's been people I've seen come, but with the lateness of the hours and so forth, people just can't stay. I mean, I gotta tell you, I'm four hours every meeting. I, I don't imagine how you guys do it. It is a lot just, just for me. And, and people aren't going to sit through that. But throughout this whole process, there's been a lot of things that as a commission, you've asked to have done. And have either not been done, not been answered, or have been done halfway. If we go back to the traffic study, that was a manual count. We, you were asked for a certified consulting arborist, you got an arborist. So I, I asked and like with my husband's statement in looking at this stuff, is, is this is what we're getting in the application phase? What can we expect when the project actually goes? If it ever is, if it's approved or what have you, what can we expect? What, what's not going to happen or what's going to happen after the fact? I know I've heard the attorney say, well, we can put that as a condition of approval. But why can't you know what that stuff is now? I mean, they're asking this to be approved, but why are we going to wait till after the fact? It's almost like pass, pass the bill and figure out what's in it afterwards. I don't think as a town, as a commission, that's something that, that we want to even set a precedent for. You know, you look at the parked cars on the side of the street. Well, that was said last time and then we have the fire marshal saying, no, that can't happen. You know, I just feel like, you know, it's, what is being said is being said to just get this passed. You know? Are, are they just saying what they think you want to hear to get it passed? Or they, they're getting paid to say what they say? And does that mean that it's, it's the truth? So then my other thing was just, again, as it's been echoed numerous times, is the health and safety of the residents of the complex. The residents of the surrounding areas, you know, the bus accident concern for the kids now that there's going to be a bus stop on the Berlin Turnpike. As a neighborhood, we have kids and we were concerned with just metal lane and the, the traffic that comes down there and what side of the street the kids are coming on. And whether or not that's safe. I just echo a lot of what, what other people have said and I don't want to take up any more of your time, but just to kind of give you those couple of things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else with a quick commission? You're done with? Anything from our planner, our consultants? Anything that you want to add? And I think we have a attorney Hope coming up. Is there something that you wanted to, okay?
Sure. Again, for the record, Megan Hope with Alter and Pearson. Wanted to know a couple of things. First is, it's my understanding that the storm water report, then the storm water quality. Calculations that were done were all reviewed by the town engineer and that they comply with all the towns. Regulations and the storm water quality manual for the state of Connecticut. So I did want to reiterate that. I believe Zach had told that at a previous meeting. Regarding the size of the units, the plans that were submitted did indicate that they are one thousand square feet of living space. And then in addition to that, there's the garage and the mechanical rooms, I think total. It's fourteen hundred square feet for the building, except for the ADA unit. That's indicated on the plans that were submitted with the application. I did actually just text Chris while we were talking about note forty one. About the residential buffer. Attorney Smith indicated that that is something that's installed during construction to. Indicate to the contractors where the limits of the upland review area is. So it states that they know that they're within fifty feet of that delineated wetland. So I did just wanted to indicate that for the record regarding the fire truck. Had we have known last week that it was the size that the fire marshal had indicated, I'm sure Zach would have run the template. We do have a few more days left before the public hearing needs to be closed, but it would require a special meeting. So I do apologize for that. I know Zach would have run that had he known that. So that's all I can offer on the fire truck item. Let me see. I think that's all I have. For responses.
Welcome. All right. Any last questions or? Oh, two? Sorry.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious and I'm going to hit Tim up having experience with the fire department with the homes being ten feet apart. And two stories. If there's a fire occurrence, would they send a ladder truck and a pump truck? And how, how, how close to these buildings being ten foot apart would it likely catch to the neighboring home that they would need additional fire trucks? Cause sometimes they do two alarm, three alarm, if you've got a lot of. Buildings that could catch.
Definitely there are exposures to, to the home. Burning, ten foot. Close exposure, definitely. Endanger that next house, next house, next house going down the line. That is a. Wind, wind speed and everything else that, that comes into consideration there. Usually the fire department tries to put what they call water curtain between the two structures. Basically spraying water between the two structures and trying to get the heat down that's between the two structures. Doesn't work that much, but it is something they do when you have structures this kind of distance apart. And there is a danger of depending on how, how, where the fire is in the building and everything else. Comes out of one window on the side of the house, they're coming out five feet of flames. You've got a five foot. Structure to the next structure, the heat radiates easy to that. It is a danger.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, well, we're still in public hearing, so yes.
So I'm responding to the, the fifty foot rear buffer. So the BT one zone is fifty feet, you know, when a budding residential in the rear. So he's, you know, he's wrong on that. So that this. This. It's, it talks in this, I don't have it in front of me right now, but it talks about rear residential, you know, fifty foot. Buffer needs to be marked and stay marked until the CO is issued, which says to me that you're building fifty feet away. From the rear line.
Yep, thank you. Diane.
I'm just wanting to ask the applicant if their position has changed in any way with respect to. The. Items that were discussed with respect to the affordable housing plan. In regard to recommendations that our consultants have made. And with respect to the term for which the affordable units would be kept.
Yeah, for the record, there's, the applicant has not changed their position of what I had stated previously, the last meeting.
Just to dovetail on that, so any suggestions that we had made regarding density or placement or. Consider as setback considerations, there's no change in the thought process, number of units?
There's been no change on number of units. We did redistribute the affordable units. We showed that. There's been no change on number of units. We did uh, redistribute the affordable units. We showed that last time.
Okay.
Um, I think uh, the other comment was about uh, the, who would be the administrator? We indicated that we would be the administrator. Um, we will, will not go beyond the 40 years and will not. Did you ask for an increase in the number of affordable units?
Well, well, originally what I had suggested was to eliminate all the units that were in the roundabout, the little turner, yeah, in the center, and then perhaps um, eliminating one or two units either on the back of the property or too close to the business that's there, because you know there's going to be banging and people talking and stuff. And then the other thing that I asked for was that we could move in or at least close in the uh, the grouping by making a couple of them as duplexes. So, that was something that I proposed, but I'm not sensing that there's any thought to that.
You're correct. Mr. Snow has not um, agreed to modify the site plan submitted on the sixth.
Okay. Thank you, attorneys. Attorney Hope. Anyone else? We're in the public hearing. Okay. All right. So, uh, we, go ahead.
Yeah, I just would like to confirm that uh, item 41 does clearly state residential buffer and upland review.
Okay. And do we have anything from, anything you want to add, Maureen?
Right now?
All right. And to our consultants, anything? Okay. All right. Okay. And Ms. Coppola, anything that you would like to add at this time? Any questions?
No, I, I think there, in, in terms of um, you know, the, ultimately the affordability plan. Um, as you know, I always request that, that and the deed restriction, because what they submitted for the deed restriction too isn't, wasn't the entire model deed restriction, although they did reference it. Um, so, you know, I always ask that any approval be subject to, to my approval of um, the provisions of the affordability plan as well as the deed restriction. So, um, you know, that's something that I will be, again, just reminding you of at the time of deliberation. Um, I understand where the differences lie as far as the affordability plan is concerned in terms of the, the length of the term of affordability, as well as um, the appointment of the administrator or what, what I will say is approval of the administrator um, of the affordability plan by the commission is something that they do not want. Um, but the remainder, it sounds like, uh, the remainder of the issues um, with regard to the back and forth between the consultants and so forth, it sounds like those have been ironed out um, at this point based upon, um, you know, what we discussed even at the last meeting. So, okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, so um, we have the, oh, Tim?
I just uh, putting on this whole pro plan, uh, we discussed this plan for so many meetings now. Uh, we gave the applicant all our concerns. Uh, and most of the concerns, well, you can put it as a condition, and put it as a condition, put it as a condition. Well, guess what? Put it as a condition does not happen. Okay? Unless it's written on the map, everything is there, every condition is on the map, everything is on the map. So the building man can go like this and look and see what was supposed to be done. Because all of our comments at this meeting are never brought across to the text department because it's not on the paperwork. Okay? I, the non-response or the non- uh, movement of the applicant on a lot of items uh, dumfounded me. Uh, and some of it was uh, safety of the people. Uh, some of it's just li- living conditions. Water flow. Uh, we have a wetland commission that, that has not approved. Uh, and with all that said, the applicants still were at the time that we've got to close the meeting. Uh, and those things are not finished yet. And I know I said more and more things, little things, not big things, mostly little things. Uh, yeah, we'll take care of that then, we'll take care of that then, we'll take care of that then. You know, it's, 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 it's amazing to me. And to have a comment like the 50 foot buffer on number 41, still there from a previous application, that they couldn't erase it or everything else. And I'm sure if I look, look down that list of all written on that full big page, I'll find more of those. I'm glad the, the, the people here found one. But uh, I'm sure there's more of that stuff on, on the thing. Now, I haven't gone over that, those, those items one by one by one by one, okay? I expect the expertise that we have to find that when it's brought before it's brought to us. The expertise that we hired, we, they hired everyone all the way down the road, okay? This, this had more expertise in this, this room, I think, than I've ever seen. And, and uh, not being wow, the, the traffic study. Well, you got expertise, did account by manual. Okay, uh, that doesn't mean nothing. You skip a car, don't see one, you're having a cigarette, whatever. Uh, you know, it's just, uh, you know, to come up with the, the, the length of fire trucks tonight, the public came in with a, after I said it, but, but the public came in with that to tell us, no, that's wrong. To call the fire marshal's office and say, no, that's wrong. Okay? I'm very upset with that tonight, uh, that the applicant couldn't or expertise quote, couldn't come up with the right answers or do it correctly on, on maps. You know? How can I say yes to what, a project that's not complete? Maps aren't complete, uh, you know, besides other reasons I, I, I have. Uh, so it's just dumbfounded to me. I say it out to public here. Uh, at the public meeting, and I'll discuss it at the, our meetings, but uh, uh, I'm just upset that the, the whole process has not gone smooth. You know, and it's, it's a smooth process when the applicant is bringing in stuff on Tuesday or Thursday meeting, or Wednesday morning for Thursday meeting. We can't review that stuff. You know, we, we, we try to be experts, but, but we're not. You know, all we can come up with logical sense in our head and say, hey, look better with these flowers here or these bushes here or whatever. Okay, just, you know, and I don't, I don't see architectural, do you?
Yeah.
On this project?
No, I haven't seen architectural.
Okay, I haven't seen architectural on this project, which is a role of the organism, the thing here. We must see architectural. We have architectural design and review in our ordinances.
Yeah.
Okay? Didn't see one of them. Okay, I see floor plans once. That's all I see in this floor plan, and to see outside what they look like. Anything, that's part of the process.
Yeah.
Big product, project. I want to see what it looks like for the, the neighbors.
Yeah.
You know? That lady sitting out on the deck in the back of this thing, looking at the deck thing next door. You know, I want to be able to go on my deck and have my cup of coffee in, in my pajamas, you know what I mean? I don't want, you know, I mean-
Well, it's your right, it's your-
But it's your right to do it, it's your property, you know what I mean?
And you're not disturbing anyone.
So that's, that's what bugging me about this, all of it, just seemed like force it. Force, force, force into the little cracks in the system.
Yeah.
Okay? Little cracks, I'm gonna force it in there.
Okay.
Eight, 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 eighty thirty, eight dash thirty G, I will go force that up to you.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. I just, I said that attorney Hope wants to, I think-
I'm letting it out that I just probably shouldn't have known right now, but uh, it's been bothering me for a lot of meetings.
That's fine. But attorney Hope, did you want to?
I just wanted to, we did submit some architectural elevations, and it looks like Maureen is holding them, so I just want to make sure they're in the record. Mr. Snow indicated that it was part of the first package that was submitted with this application.
The ones I did pull out of the file, the first ones I saw are stamped received on May 15th.
May 15th? So.
So, they're not in here.
This new, new, new uh, one right here, it's supposed to be all up to date, doesn't have that May 15th?
Okay.
Don't believe those updated to that last submission last week.
I believe they did a site plan submission. I think the architectural one was a separate packet, which hasn't changed since it was submitted in May.
Yeah. And I don't think in the, well-
We haven't had-
I don't, my memory is not that good, so I'm not gonna, all right, well, we're still in public hearing, okay? So, um, anyone else? Well, we're in public hearing, so this is your time to ask your questions. Okay? I think we have two. What?
I just have a concern that's about the, you know, the issue with the three foot ladders and, and so forth. How, how can we deal with that? Um, I think the public hearing, we have, I heard we have a few days left. How, how much more time do we have for the public hearing?
That's on your agenda. But my last calculation, um, I had 11 of the 65 extension days remaining. There's 14 days to your next regularly scheduled meeting. 11 days would be Monday, no, um, October 30th.
I'd be happy to come back for a special meeting. I, I honestly, that's a serious concern.
Yeah, but I, all right. I should probably straw poll commission to see, is there a, a flavor to have a special meeting that's on October? I don't think I can make October 30th. That's a Monday. I have guests from Montauk.
Our side of the concern, we had special-
We've had so many.
Had regular meetings going four hours to five hours. Uh, there was plenty, plenty of opportunity to address these items.
Yeah.
Plenty of opportunity.
All right.
And, and me as a volunteer to have them to come to another meeting, I don't feel that.
And that's also, yeah. Okay, well, you know, it's noted, but I don't think, yeah, I, well, we, we're gonna, there's got to be a motion to close the public hearing. So I'll entertain a motion. Wait.
Second, you have not asked for your consultant to make any further comments. I don't know if he has any further comments, but you should-
Okay. Does our consultant have any further comments? The staff have any further comments? Does my attorney have any further comments? I don't think anyone is Zoom land. No, there's no hands up, okay? And so, I will entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hamel. I'll give this one to Mr. Hamel. Further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, so moved. Onto old business. This is the application of 1906 LLC prepared by Christopher J. Smith, Esquire Alter and Pearson LLC, submitted pursuant to the general statutes of eight dash thirty G Affordable Housing Land Use Appeals. This is a proposed text, a zone text amendment to create the new 11 uh, dash EE Planned Residential Infill Develop Inclusionary Multi-Family Residential Use with the Housing Opportunity and Workforce uh, component. And this public hearing had been closed. And this is just for the text.
So, um, Ms. Juisky is going to put the text amendment up?
Well, yeah, she's got to find me information anyway. I'm going to put that down there so it looks like I'm making progress.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
She did um, verify um, the um, mission participation during the public hearings, and I just want to note for the record that the regular members have all been seated throughout the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
So, i- if you're, aside from uh, the, the proposed draft, the, the last revised copy was, was July 2023, um, as Ms. Juisky does, does have up for you. Um, you did also receive um, from PlanaMetrix, from Mr. Trolder, a report that was dated September 15th of 2023. In addition to the comments that you received uh, for your, for your meeting last week, your special meeting in terms of what your options are on this. Um, and it, you know, it's reflective of, of I think sort of the first step. Um, you know, the springboard for your discussion on this. Um, and so if you want to just pull those items out, um, that may be a good start for you. Um, again, uh, that was uh, PlanaMetrix's report dated September 15th, 2023. Um, as well as uh, the uh, comments that you did receive dated October 10th, 2023. Um, that uh, came from myself as well as Ms. Juisky and Mr. Alder. Um, and as far as the zoning regulation is concerned, in the October 10th report, you want to look at page three. Um, section five, uh, subsection four of section five. P&amp;Z could adopt the regulation as submitted by the applicant, not adopt any regulation or adopt a site-specific regulation based on alternatives um, that were drafted by PlanaMetrix. So, those alternatives again um, are coming in through the September 15th report that um, Mr. Trolder prepared for you. It is at the beginning of that report. All right. So, sorry, I mean, I think I made a mistake. No. That 1676 and 1906. So in terms of the zoning regulation for the 1906 application, that actually is in section, and this is the October 10th report. It is in section six. Um, on page seven.
October 10th. Uh, for some reason, October 10th. This October 10th thing is eluding me.
It looks like, yep.
Okay.
Received two, you received one for 1906, nineteen thirty-four, and the number, and then another one for sixteen-
October 10th, here it is, right on top.
Right, I did.
But there.
I got it. I got it. Diane, do you want? Do you want to share?
Um, bring it up.
Yeah.
So just in, in terms of and as well this, the, the September 15th report of PlanaMetrix, the started discuss, this, does discuss, um, you know, the, the updated comments from your, your consulting planner. you know, the, the updated comments from your, your consulting planner on the regulation amendment. And it does list poss, and it does contain within it possibilities, all possible alternatives. Um, the first one, and this starts on page two, um, is to simplify the applicant's submittal. So to take the regulation and, and make it much more streamlined. That starts on page one, continues on page, page two rather, continues on page three and four. That's the red line, if you will, of it. And then, following, starting on page five, is what the regulation could potentially look like. Again, with that possible alternative number one. And then possible alternative number two is a site-specific approval. So it would be similar to a plan development district, a special design district. And that does begin on page six. Again, just to sort of revisit what the, the potential alternatives are here.
With any of the alternative suggestions, um, do those alternative suggestions, um, that would the, the project comply with the alternative suggestions?
Well, I mean, I mean, well, ultimately, i- you know, what, i- if you're gonna do the, the plan, go the plan development district route, right? If you're gonna go to that alternative. Um, and you're gonna do something site-specific. I mean, you got, I think you, I kinda think, I know where you're going.
Well, so what I'm getting, what I'm getting at is, um, we've, um, read through the regulations and there are a number of regulations, um, or a number of parts of what's being proposed as a regulation that, um, would be important for us to include or not, that my understanding from the applicant's testimony is that, um, they won't accept anything that will ultimately make their project not work.
Not be compliant.
Not be compliant.
Underlying regulation itself.
Yes, so, um, in the interest of, um, cooperation, I'm, um, wondering what the commissions feel is with respect to, um, how they wanna move forward. Do they wanna just, um, uh, deny the, um, proposed regulation? Or, um, do we want to work towards cooperation, um, by suggesting amended language? Um, and choosing one of the paths that are suggested? Uh, because I, I think we're wise to show some level of cooperation. Some interest to, uh, or at least not be totally negative, um, to the application. We have to be open to consider everything objectively is uh, is my thought, but at the same time, to do the best for the town, I think we need to consider either denying or alternative language that will ultimately result in a project that's not gonna comply with the regulation.
As, as has been proposed.
As it has been proposed. But I value very highly the, um, the contributions from the consultants um, for everything that they've done. They have, um, been a tremendous help for our review, as have, um, you and Maureen.
So the point of always, uh, having that, that expertise is, is to make a project better. And yeah, I agree. I mean, I think that, uh, both Mr. Trolder and, and Mr. Enfield have been invaluable in that regard.
Tim?
Yes, uh, my question is, is with the tax amendment that has proposed, uh, we are now in the process of our affordable housing, uh, doing our affordable housing tax amendment. Uh, we just hired tonight for that project, affordable housing, uh, to design that. Uh, we have in our regulations a lot of affordable housing regulations that work for a large, the part, large units, a yards, large uh, projects, and work for other, uh, large projects in town. The A thirty dash G is what our expert did is said in the beginning, is the appeal process. I understand it's a guideline to us, but it is part of the appeal process if we don't do things, okay? But our regulations do have, uh, plan unit development regulations. We do have affordable regulations. We do have, we've been so far in advance of other towns in the state with our regulations. And again, tonight, we just approved monies to do this again for our plan of development, um, now. So we're, we're, we're pro affordable housing. Uh, this town has proven that many, many, many times. I don't think we need this regulation, uh, to proceed on any project. You know, it's, it's, uh, it seems to be pigeonholed on us a little bit, okay? Uh, and under discussions during the public hearings and stuff, uh, it was insinuated to us that we gotta do this or to go do it anyway, okay? Uh, and, uh, basically, I, I took that as a threat, okay? Uh, and it was directed to a comment that I made, so I took it as a personal threat too, besides threat to the commission. Uh, and being in favor of affordable housing myself, uh, you approve that by my votes when the commission voted down a project or whatever, uh, but we have been, been, uh, in the forefront of the, all, of all the towns. We are so close to the top and we're going to exceed that top once our project's in, working now. But we will back up because of the forty-year span or whatever the, the year spans of affordable housing, which, which I think we need to address too. Uh, and that's part of this proposal, is a forty-year span, which the A thirty G says that's a minimum. Not a maximum. It says a minimum forty years, okay? So that, to me, gives you the, us, the power say, no, that minimum, we don't wanna do. We wanna do eighty years. We wanna do forever, okay? Or, okay, forty years, and there's a renew process that's gotta come back to the commission forty years from now and say, we wanna renew it, we don't wanna renew it. And say, why does the commission, why they don't wanna renew it? And the commission sent then at that time, say, no, we, we want to renew it. Uh, you know, so to put the our policy in there saying that we could discuss it in that forty years.
An op, an option.
Option to renew.
Just something we've discussed, yeah.
Option to renew. Uh, I think that's, that is a, is a, a movement on our part. If we say ninety-nine years or, you know, forever, okay? Or we say, we'll give you an option forty years. Come, come prove to us why you, you can't do it no more, okay? Uh, that's, 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 I think, is, is movement on our part. But be, be forced. What I've been, from day one, when that first meeting came and that, or those words were sent out there, has been my little in my brain going, I don't like a big force from my lawyer, okay? I, I love our lawyer and I think she's very capable.
Thank you.
Okay?
Glad to hear.
And my wife liked you today when she talked to you, uh, but, uh, it's, it's, uh, you know, it comes back thirty years ago, twenty years ago, and Joan will remember this, I just told Diane. When our attorney used to come in here, one particular attorney used to say, oh, this is a no-brainer. That means your commission don't have to have brains to approve this. That's the same attitude that I just got from this lawyer, okay?
So, so all of that aside, um, you know, to the, to the business at hand.
Yeah, you're right.
So one of the things that was done in, in, uh, the, the October tenth report, again, for, for nineteen oh six and sixteen seventy-six, um, was it was noted, and, and this is on, uh, page seven again, for the report for nineteen oh six, um, were the various concerns that you had with regard to, um, project and regulation itself. And, and look, I mean, looking back again, uh, you know, you, you had an application that you did deny. You, you saw a copy of that site plan, that last, that last proposed, um, plan. Um, for that application, that was submitted as an exhibit tonight by the applicant's council. Um, but there, there were certain issues, uh, that you discussed during deliberation on that application. Um, and, and they mirror again the issues I think that you discussed during the course of this public hearing. Um, so I think one of the things to consider again, you know, are, you know, where, where does the the disagreement lie? Um, because at the end of the day, and, and I understand, you've made the comment multiple times about the appeals procedure and, and listen, it is a bit of a misnomer in, in the law. Um, in eight thirty G to call it that, right? Because ultimately, they want you applying that burden, um, in the application process. And that's what you're being subjected to when your decision is being reviewed. You know my, what my position is on, uh, the zoning regulation itself. I, I believe that you, you have, there is a hybrid standard that should be applied by the court. Both a combination of the eight thirty G burden as well as, um, your typical text amendment standard. Um, yeah, cuz I do think you have discretion, and that's the thing I just wanna emphasize to you. You know, I, I, it concerns me, you know, this, and, and I see it everywhere I go. You know, I've been doing this twenty-five years, and on these applications, there's this feeling of that, that you don't have the ability to engage in what you do on every non-affordable housing application. And that is, 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 you know, have a discussion about, you know, what matters to you and, and make changes and, and, you know, it's, you can approve an application and put conditions on it. And, you know, that's, that's a way to look at, you know, revising this regulation, which is, there's aspects of it that are clearly unacceptable, but not all aspects, right? Not, not the whole thing in its entirety. Um, so you gotta figure out, you know, is that more palatable to you? Um, knowing ultimately what the burden is, because this is not your first affordable housing case, um, or application. Um, and it won't be your last. I mean, you know, you, you know, you know what the law is, you know what, what the burden is. So, um, I think you, you gotta decide. I mean, you heard from applicant's council, they don't have to have the text amendment. Now, we've you've heard differently from other council, but they feel, you know, it's not, it's not an absolute need for them. Um, and, you know, the, but the question becomes, if you deny the text amendment, okay? We don't know whether there will be an appeal of that, of a denial of it. So I'm gonna caution you that i- if the inclination is to deny, that you do need to give reasons. Okay, you can't just say, we're gonna deny it. You've gotta give reasons for it. Um, and you, you need to reflect upon what that appeals standard is. Okay, that burden is an eight thirty J. So, um, you know, happy to, you know, Glenn, Maureen and I, we're happy to support you in, you know, any effort. Um, if you're inclined to, to, again, to rewrite it. Um, whether it's making it simple or making it something more site-specific. See, I think that decision, I think I said it very early on and, and this whole process with these applications, I think that's a very important decision for you because you have spent so much time adopting various affordable regulations. And so you gotta decide, do you wanna, you know, if the project ultimately gets built, what do you feel about the fact that there's no underlying regulation for it? Um, is that something that you dislike the idea of? Um, and that, and that, and that's something I think you ha, you know, if you haven't thought about it, um, you know, you, I think you need to give some thought to that. Um, because you have, you have put in a lot of time. I know it's hard. I know you've sat through a lot of hours um, with these applications. It's not, it's not easy, you know, because, um, um, and, and we've mentioned this, you know, the other piece of this is you've continued on with your P O C D meetings, you've talked again, you, you've now are at the point where you've reviewed all your affordable regs. There's, um, tax amendments that are gonna be proposed, um, with, with the help of F H I and of course, um, your planner. Um, you know, based upon, uh, and, and you've done that over a course of a number of meetings. I've been at some, but not all of them. So I know you've been doing this for a lot of months and we're saying, you know, maybe you wanna do this again with regard to this project, and it is work. And I get it, um, but, you know, you gotta think about, do, do you really, um, you know, if, if you're inclined to approve the site plan, okay? And I get that there's gonna be conditions of approval because they've proposed conditions of approval. Your consultant has proposed conditions of approval. I told you I want a couple, right? Um, but, um, you know, but can you live with the idea that there's no underlying reg that's controlling, um, in this instance? So, you know, that's, that's a planning piece. Um, so, I don't know what everybody's thoughts are on that.
Okay, what, what's, if we don't do the right and we do it under deep deep restrictions on units, deep restriction on the property, whatever you want.
So that's all, that's, that's all part of, you know, the affordability plan, that it's gonna be data restricted and, and all of that, so.
Right, but, but if we don't go with the whole eight, eight thirty G, uh, and we go with the deep restrictions, so it's with the, the affordability's gotta be by forty-plus years with a option, uh, or whatever, other pieces of the regulation we might wanna pick out. Uh, to make, then it's, then it's more plan unit development, I guess, uh, you know? And, uh, on our plan unit, well, we can do that, I think. Uh, and it's just we're, we're seen be getting binded to the eighty, A thirty G, and, and, and you know, with us redoing our affordable housing now and what we've done over the years. I don't wanna throw that stuff away that we've done because it's been successful for us. Uh, and under the way we've been doing it, we have a lot of wiggle, whatever you wanna call, we talked to We talked to developers, you know. And we say, well, how about you moving the building here, you know, moving a little bit further away from the the lot lines or ever uh. And and uh. Basically negotiate with the the developer. To come out with a nice project that we can live with and they can live with. Uh. And again. With this proposal. It's just. Uh now I get a problem with the state telling us what to do, but but it's it's a.
Yeah, but that you got to put that aside.
Yeah.
You've got to, I mean, they.
Right.
I know, I know, but we have the, we have, we could punch in our regulations.
But here's a question I have. We had the infill. Development that we did specifically to help. Uh people who were developing along the Berlin Turnpike. And we have. We have affordable regulations um as well in place. Plus now we're redoing them. And it seems to me, just, you know, looking back on all these months, it seems to me that every time. We seem as a commission to take a step forward toward compromise. Or charge making a better project. So that the project is something that the people of Berlin and and adjacent neighborhoods could be proud of. And that the people who actually live within the project could be proud of. It seems to me every time we step forward. It's.
Step.
You're we're being told, no, it's it's non negotiable, non negotiable, so. Let's just say hypothetically. That we take this text amendment and we make this text amendment to what we want it to be. And we adopt it. They're still going to say no. So I'm wondering, why am I bothering creating another text amendment when I already have something that we worked hard on in play?
See, I know, I I guess my response to that is a non legal response. I I think that you can't assume. That uh your applicant, if if you do. Revised or, you know, conditionally approve the text amendment application, you cannot assume. That uh they're going to say no. I mean, I think I think that you you know, they have an opportunity. Um to resubmit, of course, um and you you know, they'll make a decision on whether or not it's something that they, again. That they want to appeal or not appeal. Um so you you know, they have options, just like you have options, and you can't assume a course of action. Um I don't, I don't think, I don't think that that's the basis on which you decide your path here. Know what what their response is going to be. I think that you've you've got to, you know, you 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 clearly have certain. Issues that uh you know, throughout the course of potential development of of this property. Um that have been raised over and over and over again.
Mm hmm.
Um and on some some things, you're probably like minded on other things, you may not be. Um and I think you got to, you you know, you got to kind of head down that path and figure out. Where you're at. Um and I think it'll become more clear to you um as you do that. And that's really why we put the list together, you know, like this list on page seven, right? It's it's section six, subsection two. Um it says applicant has not responded to staff consultant commission concerns. So we've got, you know, the parking is an issue, right? The parking ra- ratio.
Mm hmm.
Um uh limited information that the P N Z could request on an application, so there's certain um, there's a list. Of uh, you know, information that you could re- require, right? So so you know, that's something you. You can look at other regulations, you know, there is there additional information, these types of projects you want to have. Um uh the language implying the technical standard in uh eight thirty G. The limiting term of the deed restriction, we talked about so much, right? So you know, these are some, these are some of the things, right? I know, and I and and I mentioned this during the course of public hearing, I and you'll recall it too, because you know, you're you're. Get very, very long hearing process on the non eight thirty G application for for this property. Um you know, you talked about amenities, you talked about um, you know, just the the. Are you mentioned architecturals, you talked about the architecturals, right? You talked about um, you know, just the size and so on and so forth. So all of these things are all, you know, your bulk standards, your typical stuff, so. Again, um. You decide your path. I offer recommendations. Um I think it's a worthwhile endeavor to figure out. Um whether the path is an outright path of no, you know, we're going to reject this thing. Or just even amongst yourselves, if you're like minded enough. To to make um a decision to. Conditionally approve it, whether it means, again, going a simpler route. Or going the route of doing something that's more. Oh in the line of a planned development district or a special design district. Um you know, I think I think you need to have that conversation. Um to figure out, you know, do do you all agree enough on? Whether that makes sense and what the content would be and so on and so forth. So that's just my thought on it. I don't know if Maureen or or Glenn want to add anything. I feel like I'm monopolizing a little bit. So I'm going to be quiet. Because you need to talk.
So I have um a couple of thoughts. I look at the text amendment and I mean, just using the bulk tables, for example, um. It's not something I want to subject a resident of Berlin to. It seems very dystopian to me. Um but knowing that. An outright no could be appealed. And this could be. Forced on our books, and this is not something I want on our books because. Seeing as I see it dystopian in that manner, um. It's not something I want to encourage, and if people see this, it might encourage more of this. Um so as far as me. Um I think that. A site su- uh specific approval. Or um the P D D approach might be something that we should discuss.
Okay, anyone else? Joe?
Yeah, I I agree, um, Mr. Rogan, that. It would be worth our while hearing our attorney's thoughts there to step through it. We've had an expert give us some good guidance. Maybe step through it with his guidance um in front of us. Discuss it and kind of quickly go through paragraph or numbers. And see if we are like minded. And and then add pieces or have additional confirmation or conversations on. Pieces that we may want to add or have up for discussion with everyone, whether it should be included or not included. Specific to this number or address and see where we get. Um. I fear that if we just say no, it can be appealed. So I think, given a little time, we could review what our expert has provided as ideas and. You know, agree or disagree as a group.
Can anyone else? Well, I don't know. And this is for the text amendment. Yes.
So it is on your agenda and um it is indicated that you have to decide it by November eleventh. I think Miss Juicy is just double checking. There's just the November second meeting.
I think.
Well, I think that's what.
Uh we are.
I think our consultant also.
Consultant.
Talk.
Uh between the the three, you can, you know.
Well.
Come up with guideline to us.
Let's hear what.
I I think Glenn Chalder, for the record, I think I think we. Research and force and guidance from the commission and all what you've talked about so far has been helpful, so uh thank you for that. Um just want to start off real quick. I I want to commend Berlin for all the work you have done on affordable housing. You've just a great deal, you've written new regulations. Um you've tried to find ways to make good progress on, so I just want to give you a pat on the back for those efforts. Maybe that's the good.
Thank you.
The bad news is that eight thirty G is a different type of application. So doesn't have to comply with your regulation. Well, the scenario could be that if you were to receive other eight thirty Gs in the future, everybody would submit their own application. And pretty soon your zoning regulations could. Number pages could increase dramatically.
Mm hmm.
As I listened to the testimony at the public hearing, the feedback from the commission. Um is Attorney Capola indicated. Comments here on page uh seven of the report on nineteen oh six talked about the things the commission expressed concerns about. And I think as Brian indicated, Mr. Rogan, the the idea is. These are things in the regulations that just sort of don't work on all the sites, yet they're in your book. So what what does that do? So I think there are a couple of options. I I believe that. Housing applications are much like site specific spots, if you will, which you've always been told don't do.
Yeah.
You have a fairly good regulation already built into your regs for a planned development district. But the regulation, the way it's set up in your current regulations is essentially a zone change. The applicant didn't apply for a zone change, so I don't think we have the time or the ability. To flip their application into a zone change. On the other hand, longer term. More meeting. Or date nights.
Mm hmm.
I think the commission could have a scenario where you might be able to tweak the P D D regulation you have. Or adopt another regulation that would now cover all future affordable housing developments. There's certain things I think the commission should require as part of the development. Thorough site plan, thorough traffic study, really good housing affordability plan. Good input from engineers, from a farm marshal, et cetera, so that we work out all of the issue.
Yeah.
As part of the testimony tonight, as we're closing out the hearing on sixteen seventy six. Issue you they were kept coaching their. Professionals. Any substantial threat to public health or safety. Designed for a very. Just for reason.
Mm hmm.
But I felt that. Was trying to read tea leaves. Thought the commission wasn't really thrilled with what the applicant had submitted. So that's an option for you to adopt that, but I wasn't sure you would. Comfortable with that, so I wanted to provide you with some other options. One of which is that we could spend time tonight or the next meeting. Kind of tweak all the things in their regulation to make the language better. I think that's a lot of time. Somebody else may do it again in the future. The other options uh would be to. Uh simplify their regulation dramatically. That's what I tried to do in option number one. Attorney Capola indicated on the uh September fifteenth ammo. Report from Planometrics. I realize that's a lot to go through tonight, but if you're color coded. Uh blue is delete and red was add. Since what I did is look their text. All the things the commission said they didn't like. Axed out. Said, okay, well, what do we really need in this regulation? And the issue is. We'll call it section nine double E. Or we can leave the name if we want. Uh but the issue is that of the things the commission found uh troublesome or uh burdensome. Uh could be eliminated, and if you go to page five of that report. Is what the clean regulation could look like. And and basically what it says is. Multi-family developments in accordance with the eight thirty G may be permitted on certain properties along the Berlin Turnpike or Route fifteen. About the adaptive reuse and redevelopment of underperforming properties. Permitted uses multi-family. Accessory buildings, amenities and structures. And this is the information we require. I think that that could provide an umbrella, if you will, that would allow the commission to have a regulation. May recall from. Brian Miller, I believe. Submitted a response dated August two. This is in response to my uh report at the end of June. Comments about the regulation um in his paragraph said. If the commission would like to amend the zone text amendment, the applicant has no objection. So long as the text, the zone text amendment is consistent with the site development proposal. In this regulation, we do. So this is one way that you could. Not get into the dystopian provisions. So if they say, look, an affordable housing development is going to go through the process, we're going to review it for substantial threats to public health and safety. We're going to try to get the best development we can. Recognizing these standards are are. Attorney, uh Commissioner Zigman indicated, kind of imposed by the state. Right, but and that's one of our choices. And then I think the other option that's available at the end is more towards a. Site specific. Well, the first one is sort of put their text. I only add in ten or fifteen new words and red, everything else is what they had. Actually, no, excuse me, it's more than ten or fifteen words because the whole section about. I adapted their text, and I think there is some uh. Red text added in for uh submittals. Alternative number two is a site specific approach, more like the P D D. As the zone for this site. Um would be the B T affordable housing development for nineteen oh six Berlin Turnpike. Purpose of this zone is to. Document an affordable housing development approved by the commission. As a result of the affordable housing appeals proceeding. Now, this isn't all the work the commission did before. This is a development that it's kind of state requires us to ponder. Then we would list the specific plans that we approved. Latest revision dates would identify the site plans, which these sheets there are in the set at this at this time on nineteen oh six. Um would identify the architectural plans, specifically what's approved. Housing affordability plan. Will be uh enacted approving that as uh. Should we go ahead and approve the application? Deed restrictions and then other documents. We've now created. Package of. The record. Regulations. I think the last option. For all. Is not to approve a regulation at all. All pointed out. How the development on the ground. Doesn't have any regulation that says that was. Now, we would know. Else. Is that in fact, there's a commission. Those are the options available to you. Terms of the regulation. I don't think. Has a timing issue here. Nineteen oh six, the second option may not work. Normally, my advice to you. The applications first, the physical aspects figured out, sets the parameters of the development. Or housing affordability plan, details with that. And the regulation could be the last, that's your P D D site specific. Challenge we have here with the timing of these, you have to act by November.
Eleven. On the text amendment for nineteen oh six.
So we would not already have finalized the site plans by that time. So the third option or the option uh option number two in the uh September fifteenth report. We don't have dates on the plans that we should really do to insert. That may not. I I would have to. Think about that a little bit. I think the way to do that. Prove the plans if we don't have. Specific dates. additions of approval. It's been a little trick. So. This could be something that the commission would work on with F H I studio. A regulatory umbrella, eight thirty Gs could. Spend a year working on the regulations so good F H I and so be commencing. I think my own. Start all over. Having a an umbrella of some type. Allow the commission to do its work through the site plan and the development aspects. Have a regulatory umbrella that. Those are my thoughts today.
I think I think that's a big question. Does anybody have any questions about what Glenn said? Because it's not easy. It's complicated. So you know, you ask any question that comes to mind, like, don't hesitate.
So I guess my question would be then um. Just to clarify.
option one on the table is to super simplify the text amendment. Or you go with option three, which it would be a straight-out denial because option two, um, we just don't have the time.
I can't think of a solution to that, right? And if I have to have longer car ride of anybody in the room is that I get a chance to kind of think about it after the meeting. So I have nothing's occurring to me right now because I assembled that for your consideration. Wanted to say, okay, we've worked out the details of the plan and now it's a handcuffs, but it's basically a set of handcuffs on the application. Say, you know, that plan that we approved on remember whatever day, that was the plan. That's it. So having the dates to tie it into something I felt would give the commission quite a bit of authority over the plan that was approved. Any modification or change to that needs to happen in a diligent way. So can't think of a clean way to do it. You're going to have to publish notice of the decision and.
What would happen if number two, you went with number two? So for number two to work, you pretty much have to have an approval of the site plan because if the site plan wasn't approved, then number two wouldn't work whatsoever.
I I think uh yeah, when we say number two, we're talking about number two in the September.
Yes, the site, yeah.
I I think my thought was to tie it into that and my advice to the commissioner would be do the site plan first, up till the housing affordability plan into that, and then the zone change is the belt suspenders at the end that bodies that into your regulations. So you've covered all of the bases. Might be a bit of a challenge here, given the amount of time that we have spent on the application. We've we've spent all of our extension times continuing to hear the applicant on a Wednesday submittal for a Thursday meeting. It's been kind of unfortunate overall.
Uh huh.
It's possible, I think, that the commission could look at option one here. We haven't dramatically changed the applicant's submittal. It's still their language predominantly. But we took out stuff that they were trying to limit the information the commission could ask for. Can't ask her information about her if you move those parts of the city. Well, we should be able to look at all the issues we've had on nineteen oh six. The regulation said, no, you can't have it. Ask it. Other types of situations, you're implying in the text that there was some sort of standard in eight thirty G for traffic. It's not. Issue is it's site-specific related. So these extraneous provisions that really do do anything in the regulation tried to eliminate, they're less. This application needs the following materials for the commission's full review. And if there's other information that comes up, we'll ask for that too. Given the timing issue here, unless some magic that you and I come up with next week or so, that option one in this this memo may be the best recommendation we would have. Longer term, I think you could set up a better umbrella. Given the time constraints, the application.
Uh huh.
Option two is the excuse me, option one.
Yeah.
Could be the best choice.
If we were to ask you to um, you know, I guess, make a motion to draft this up, um, that'd be something that you guys did and then we would vote on it next meeting. Um, I guess is, is this what we're looking at or is there any like more Ts or Is that you might want to dot or add to it over over our based off of our discussions during the public hearings?
Mission is is tending in this direction. I think if you would give us an opportunity over the next week, I think the text, which is on page five, that's likely to be sort of the clean version that we would now if Capola, Maureen and I would sit down and walk through and say, okay, we recovered all of the bases here. Pretty much is all of the basis that the applicant submitted because that was the foundation.
Yeah, I think the I think that one of my concerns is that um the length of the affordability on the residence, I would think we would have to state that. In other words, um.
It's something that we should talk.
Yeah.
Attorney Paul and I have had conversations that you heard Attorney Smith testify here at the podium that we didn't really care if you adopted the regulation or not. Statute requires that they submit it, but even if you don't, you're still going to have to fill out the application, the housing affordability. My view, that clearly implies that the housing affordability is not part
Yeah.
of the plan.
Yeah.
But I think we need to have housing affordability plan submitted. Language in here right now says uh plan format uh adopted by the commission. I hope that sometime over the next few months you will do that. We don't have one today. We we may put your action on this application, but standard or model as affordability. I I I tried to separate the regulation
Yeah.
for the site on the mechanics
Yes.
and the specifics, which I believe the site.
Okay. All right. Commission.
My question here is, um, do we even address the setbacks?
Not in the regulations themselves. As we have on seventy-six, they propose setbacks that we feel are less than we would want them to be. I think as part of the commission's review of that, they choose to amend or modify what they have submitted during the course of an application. We may have additional conversation. Putting it into a regulation triggers a couple of things. First of all, they have said, as long as you don't upset our site plan with your regulation, we don't care what you do. That that is, again, part of your approval authority for the the uh physical plans, the site plans, we'll call them, that that have been submitted. But I think if we put setbacks in here for since nineteen oh six, would they appeal the regulation? Perhaps. Because if the setback made their site plan non-conforming, the the place to deal with that might defer to Attorney Capola, might might be as part of the site plan, not part of the right.
Five eleven? Our next meeting, so.
Just the text that we have more time on every.
I know. Just the text, just the text. Do you want the extra time or you want to decide now?
I would personally, if we're considering this, and um I think that this is a safer option than taking the chance of having this down on the books, um, whether it's through us or through the courts. Um, I think this is a lot safer and I would, if we're going to explore this, I would like to give our staff and our consultant um the time to put their hard hats on and get the details done so that.
We'll be ready to go next week.
Yeah. I don't want to say something I can stomach, but something I can live with.
Hmm. Yeah. Anyone else? How does it sound? How does it sound?
I agree with what Commissioner Rogan.
Um, so do we want to continue then? Do we want a motion to continue this? So that we're Yeah, because we're deliberations, so. What? Ms. Miller? Okay.
Well, so if we have our our consultant and our staff go through this and bring us something the next meeting, we review it and talk about it. And we have to, can we make changes to it? Or whatever is brought to us is.
No.
You can make changes to it.
Okay.
Absolutely. At that meeting?
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. You can make changes to it.
Alrighty, but it has to be voted on by next meeting.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Can I, can I just add to that for clarity that if you see something here that is is in what you're looking at now, that you want us to pay
Attention to.
attention to or or really, you know, you have thoughts on it. You know, bring it to our attention so that we can we we can address that and hopefully then that product you see is closer, more to your liking, more to your liking.
Okay. If we don't say it tonight, can we do this, send you something?
You can say it the same night.
Yep.
Or prior to that.
Yeah.
At the time you deliberate and and take a, you know, before you take a vote, you can continue to massage text.
Okay.
Be appropriate.
All right. So so we need a motion to, yeah, continue, if that's what the commission wants to do. Anyone want to make a motion?
To ask, to draft this.
Hey, um, I'll make a motion uh for um staff and counsel and our um consultant to um combine their thoughts and work on fine-tuning um a regulation amendment similar to what's been presented to us as um option one on the September fifteenth Planometrics report uh shown on page five.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rogan, for the discussion. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, some moved. Okay, moving on.
Did you aye?
Yeah, you you aye. Yeah, well, well, you have to, you know. Yeah. So we have Rogan, Joe? Okay, all right. Next, we have the uh application for the site plan approval for a permit of fifty-two units, multifamily residential Sprucebrook Apartments on real properties known as nineteen oh six Berlin Turnpike, map twenty-one dash two, block one fifteen, lot seven, nineteen thirty-four Berlin Turnpike, map twenty-one dash two, block one fifteen, lot eight and zero uh Turnpike, which is map twenty-one dash two, block one fifteen, lot eight A. Alrighty, so this is actually the site plan. Does everyone have to pull their stuff out or anyone want to begin?
We do have quite a bit of time to decide this. But you know, all things considered, while it's fresh in mind, and uh agenda indicates you have to decide it by December sixteenth. And uh, you know, a lot has, a lot has been discussed. Public hearing closed the last meeting. Want to give us some some direction?
Well, I think um this particular project seems to be fraught with um very serious safety um and accessibility concerns uh with respect to the um the amount of slow, um the amount of fill that needs to be brought in, the proper compaction of the fill, the steepness of the slope and the change to the slope that um was originally proposed to accommodate um erecting a ladder uh for regular maintenance or emergency access. Um, ongoing maintenance of um vegetative growth after the project is complete um to continue to maintain access, the lack of easements um from uh DOT and the abutting property owners um to accommodate access um or accommodate work that needs to be done um or access to accomplish the work that needs to be done. I I have some very serious reservations about this site plan. Um, we did present an option um at the last meeting um to consider reduction in the number of units um and bringing the buildings in away from the boundaries
Yeah.
um to help lessen the steepness of the slopes and um that was something that apparently was um the applicant is unwilling to consider. So um I don't know, I have some big concerns on this.
Yeah. All right. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to um continue on those thoughts and just we looked at simple things like uh, you know, dumpster area and stuff like that and how it was undersized for the development. And what we got is that it can be emptied more. Um, I was hoping for more dumpster locations. I mean, to ask somebody to walk across an entire project to throw their trash out seems a bit excessive. Especially if they're handicapped, they're rolling their way across a parking lot. Um, fifty-two units, um, I mean, fifty-two trash bags per day. I mean, that those dumpsters, you're going to be needing to empty them every day. And if it starts overflowing, I mean, that's a health issue right there. It starts attracting, you know, rat, yeah, pretty much rats and
Bears and.
Um, so that's a health issue and at the very beginning, um, you know, I talked about uh access to public transport, thinking that we had a bus route down that Turnpike. I don't know why I always think that you, it is Turnpike, but um I was corrected that we don't have that by Chris Edge, but he was working on it, but still, um, public transport also includes school buses and I never really saw that ever addressed. Um, as you look at those slopes behind the buildings to the east, I mean, there's a ditch there. They're talking about snow piling that, this and that. Um, fifty-two units, fifty-two kids. I mean, still need to have that access, that safe access to the highway um for those school buses and you know, I never saw that addressed. Um, so those are two things that pop into my brain.
Okay, anyone else? I mean, I know you guys have hit a lot of it, so.
Yeah, the the safety of the people uh with the units uh I know it will be sprinkled. Uh, that is a safety item, but uh the back of these buildings being to the ridge line uh forty feet or close to forty feet uh with that, with the with the formula for l- ladders, we're putting it out to ten to twelve foot. We're talking the the uh you know, the fire marshal said eight to nine. Uh, I went through the standards today. Uh, it would be ten to twelve foot and that's right on the edge, the the when the ladder's pushed out, that's right on the edge. So if you're putting a retaining wall there or whatever, uh, you know, then you don't have a work going behind that ladder. Uh, and and the Commissioner brought up last meeting that the one he just said the east uh the backyard of that one uh doesn't conform either. And I don't think you have the area there to conform uh because you have to conform on state property. And the state would have to allow to, because that one's almost up against the state property. Uh, the state would have to allow to grade that out further. Uh, so each each one of the buildings have that problem. Uh, you know, the southern one and the whatever, they all have that problem uh towards the rear. Uh, you know, every house in towns, a three-family house, whatever, have fire escape in the back. There's two means of egress. Front door, you know, the front porters or the back door with a staircase, okay? Uh, there is not two means of egress on this property. I worry about in my mind, I worry about second uh third floor bedrooms to the rear. Okay, uh, that's what I look at, the health of uh safety of welfare, okay? I also will go back to those fire truck dimensions. Uh, they went through with a school bus, thirty-five foot school bus, and they showed. And one place, the tail end does touch the parking lot, even as I'm in their drawing, okay? But now go with a forty-five foot truck. Okay, with that tail swing. Cars parked in those parking places or go get clipped in the end if they're parked out from the curb, that pulled all the way up to the curb, you probably will miss them. But people don't pull all the way to the curb because they're covering the sidewalk in the front. Uh, you know, it's just the design is so tight. Uh, it it it's a safety issue immediately to me. Uh, again, you know, uh, it's I just, I just see the whole project being overbuilt. Okay, uh, and Things changed and not brought up in our attention. All right, the southern, the southern one, one, one more unit, right? Didn't bring it up to our attention. Let's just change the plan. That, that is very, very worrisome to me when they can do something like that and now they want to construct. Something, and what are they going to change? The other thing I heard in the last meeting, that we don't have architectural and design stuff. Chairman asked for, if they could put shutters on the back of the building to make it look good to the property owner, next door. And got shut down by the applicant saying that we don't have that design. We do have that design, okay? That's in our regulations. You know, and we asked, right? And we asked, but, and, and design is not just a flat building. Okay? Every other project that we did, we looked for wide facial boards. Six over eight, over eight windows, whatever we did, okay, to get a colonial look, okay? Some of the projects like the downtown, we did hardy board, you know? That design element was not there, okay? And the floor plans changed. And that changed without, no, and they moved one of the, the handicap units, basically without telling us, okay? Yeah, they just gave us a map and we're supposed to catch it ourselves. I don't trust with that kind of stuff happening over the last, how many months we've been reviewing this. Of not happening when it's being built. Okay? And it's concerned to me of a safety item that will keep on coming back to that. You know, handicap, the sidewalks were removed for the handicapped, can't roll down the sidewalk. Well, why are you moving every sidewalk? We didn't say nothing about sidewalks. You removed the sidewalks. Now that handicapped person in that center. You know, can't, can't come around, can't, can't walk because no sidewalks there. You know, it just keeps on coming up. And every time we talk about, say, well, you could make it as a condition, you could make it as a condition, you can make it as a condition. Guess what? Conditions never get done. They never get done. Okay, we can make it as commission. We'll write, we'll do it. Commission, you know, it's less, less is drawn on the map and agreed to on the map. Okay? Like I said earlier, it gets to the building department and stuff like that. And when it gets to the building department. They're building it and it looks nice, okay? But that might be look nice, but it's not what we desire, we asked for. And I've seen that many and many, many times when, and I don't, don't. Not bad, I mean, miles in our building department because they go by the codes, okay? But the little extra things that we asked for, trees, bushes, whatever. The snow shelves on this one. You could put the snow on, on those snow shelves. They're saying there goes snow shelves? They're not. They're planted and they look at the, look at the, the planning design, okay? They're planted. Okay, they can't meet our lighting standards, okay? What do we do, we do in other projects? We asked for the lighting standards with the old time curly, oh, lights, red down lighting. Where it didn't go on other properties and stuff like that, and we got the lighting done, okay? But no, they wouldn't address the lighting, okay? This is the way it is and this is the way we're doing it. And that's the attitude I've gotten through this whole, the process over this time, you know, and maybe it's because. Previous application, you know, they, they, they did jump loops and they're not jumping loops this time, okay? It might be a bad taste there, but.
All right, just to, just to sort of dovetail on, you know, they're all good thoughts and I won't, I don't want to repeat, so I, I. I support every, no, 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 I, but I'm supporting everything that you've said, Diane and, and, and Brian. I think one thing that, the, one of the last things that I could probably say is that. I, I just see pavement and I just see buildings and I see no walking path or trail. Like you said, the sidewalks were removed, so there's no option for that. You know, I, I, I don't see this, I guess if you told me it was a hotel, if it was one building in a hotel, I'd say, yeah, well, I kind of figure. But, you know, a long time ago, I learned from a very good planner who told me something very simple. He says, never fight nature. So you're best to build a project that runs with the topography. But don't try to force topography on nature because the nature will find its way. And I think that's one of the things that I think about is the seventeen feet of fill and then you have these buildings and you have these large retaining walls. And I, I just, I, I just. I, I know they're going to be engineered retaining walls, but so was the one over by now PC Richards. That was an engineered retaining wall and boy, did that take a flop. But I, I, it's just a concern of mine that we're forcing ourselves on nature. And we're not working with it. We're working in the opposite direction and drainage, water, snow. Everything runoff will take its toll. And so that's, that's my follow-up concern on top of everything that's been stated so far. That and the fact that this is just all pavement and buildings. I don't see any life there.
And I just have one last thing I want to say. I have to imagine the intent of this legislation for affordable was supposed to be about the people. You know, that's why they have three main criterias of, you know, health, safety and welfare. They want to make sure that the people living in this have a good quality of life. And I asked, and they have an affordable place to live. And I asked a simple question to Mr. Miller when we were talking about the forty year. Why? Why can't we go beyond forty years? And to paraphrase, he said, well, it's about money. And I see that theme repeated. Where when I look at this whole site plan and everything, it seems to be more about the money than the people leaving, living in it. And. I don't think that fits the heart of the legislation. That, yeah.
What the intent was, yeah. Okay, anyone else? Andra, Scott, we're in deliberation. Yeah, June?
We did get a floor plan for the middle units of the wheelchair accessible, but we didn't get the floor plan for the end units. And they stated it was different. And we asked specifically for the four floor plans, so I felt that that was incomplete for us providing that information. The ones they didn't provide are side access. I have concern with wheelchair access in snowfall. They would have to snow. You know, shovel around to the side of the building anytime you have snowfall and it's just a very difficult process for someone that has. That limitation in accessibility on buildings, so that was a big concern of mine. And I think isn't, and help me out commissioners, is this the one where we asked for it to go from ten to fifteen around a landing around the buildings? Was that the other one? Is that this one?
No, I think this one, in other words, you were, we were asking for a flat.
Yes, more flat space.
Yes, more flat space.
Now, I know we threw it at them at our last meeting and I know their engineer tried to help with us on saying, how would that change it? But then our expert kind of corrected what he thought it might be, so I don't know that we have a good picture. Of what the building construction is going to require. With that change. I guess it seems like it can be done, but. It seems to be a bit of a challenge to create more walls or more ledges or more height. And then that further complicates the compounding of the ground and how it's made. So those are concerns that I have.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, you're talking about the retaining wall in the back. You know, they put a fence up there. It's a chain link fence, okay? We talked about that. No time that these plans ever come back with nothing but a chain length fence, okay? And we asked for the wrought iron, black looking fence that we put everywhere, okay? No, that doesn't, that doesn't, that doesn't work. Well, at least now we got a response to it. Plans coming in the last second. We, we are so far. What we were asking for adjustments that we weren't, not, not some big adjustments. There weren't no big adjustments really. Fire safety and stuff like that. There weren't big adjustments, okay? That building to the east, we still can't, can't do that, okay? I've, I'm just, things that were never addressed. Oh, put it as a condition. I, I, I'm dumbfounded that, that the applicant. Even the stuff that our, our, whatever we call, consultant asked for, okay? They weren't addressed. They weren't addressed. They weren't addressed. You know, and we asked them to go together for two weeks and get them all dressed, right? They didn't come back all dressed, okay? They came back with a lot of them dressed. But, but every time we brought up something on this whole project, it wasn't addressed. Now, no one ever addressed that fire truck coming in that property, except that school bus coming in the property, but that not forty-five foot fire truck never was addressed coming in on that property, okay? You know, it's, it's, it's a safety thing totally. And I can't see, even, even thinking of, of adopting this, this plan without those safety items being addressed. And that's one of the, like, I said, this is, that's one of the things in the eight thirty G that they express first thing. This is health and safety of the people, you know, and, and, and they don't want to address that, health and safety? That fence is health and safety.
Okay, now Scott Hamel or, or Andra, do you have anything you want to add? Okay, anyone else want to have anything to add? Okay.
Just quickly, I think. Commissioner Beely, I think you had mentioned last time too about the lower level with windows in the basement and how would we control.
Yes.
That, and I think that's a big concern. I mean, with the limited space that they're creating all of these homes on, I'll say homes loosely. If we add people. To these homes greater than the expectation, it could be, I think, more hazardous. In car traffic, emergency situations, especially if there's fires and, and, and getting people out of these structures for three levels versus two. I don't know if their windows are egress or emergency size, so I, I think it has to be so far off the ground in order for little kids to climb over windows in the back exit. So that has to be fire safety exitable in an emergency situation. I believe, I could be wrong on that, but that's a concern.
Yeah, I mean, there's so many issues that have come up. Anything else?
Am I correct in remembering that we're still waiting for a final report from Wetlands on this one? We had, there was a letter saying that it wasn't, but we, we were waiting for a final consensus, right?
Yeah, because they, they haven't met since the report from consultant came in. So they won't be meeting until their November meeting. I'm not sure of the date of that. I, I want to say it might be the fourteenth.
But I mean, can we make a decision?
Well, my inclination would be to. Ask council to draft. A motion. To deny. The site plan application. Citing the safety concerns that have been raised, health, safety and welfare concerns. That have been raised during our deliberation or consideration.
Typically work with staff and your staff would be.
Please.
Yeah.
Please include Maureen and Mr. Chalder.
Okay. All right, so that is a motion?
That is a motion.
Do we have a second, everyone? Okay, Mr. Hamel, yes?
I have by something, yes. You all that, on the town calendar indicates that the Wetlands meeting is scheduled for November fourteenth. Okay.
Further discussion, then all those in favor, aye. Those opposed, so moved. Okay, now on to the application, a little house living LLC prepared by Christopher J. Smith, a squire alter in Pearson LLC. Submitted pursuant to the general statutes eight dash thirty G Affordable Housing Use Appeals. Proposed zone text amendment to create the eleven EE planned residential infill. Now, this one, we've already, do we need additional continuation on the first item? This is the text amendment? Is this all part of, go ahead?
Yeah, I was thinking I would suggest that we, you know, head in the same direction as we did with the previous text amendment that we saw tonight.
Okay, so you have a motion? I think that would probably. Yeah.
Okay, then I'll make that motion.
So that.
That's what I was.
Okay.
That's why I asked if it worked.
All right.
And that was the September fifteenth report of Plan of Metrics. Last time. And it was positive, possible alternative number one. That you were applying the pursue and you could do something different on this. Just say that.
I think it's.
But he has any thoughts?
I think it's appropriate, but last time Commissioner Jorsy said it very eloquently.
Say it again?
Yes, please.
Okay, oh, boy.
Well, and also to. Address the point that was made with respect to option number two in the Plan of Metrics report and there being. Likely insufficient time to complete adoption of that as an option at this time. Our preference is to go for the option one, so my motion would be to request that. Council, staff and Mr. Chalder work together to finalize a proposed amended regulation. Similar to what's proposed as option one in the Plan of Metrics September fifteenth. Report to the Planning and Zoning Commission and represented on page five.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Rogan, further discussion on what we did, okay? All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, so move. Last, application of a site plan approval to permit twenty unit multifamily residential community on real property known as sixteen seventy-six Brolin Turnpike. This is map twenty-two dash one, block one fourteen, lot ten. And I want to get my plan up. But anyone can start it if you want.
I have to say, I am quite disappointed in the lack of the consulting arborist report. It was specified during the public hearing on two nights and at least twice during one of those meetings that there was a distinction between. The consulting arborist versus a regular arborist. The consulting arborist versus a regular arborist. Um, the consulting arborists are held to a, a higher standard. And, um, that was the reason for requesting the consulting arborist opinion, um, in this case. And, um. So, uh, I, I, it just is a disappointment to me. I don't see how, um. The close proximity of the trees and the, you know, the tree line area. Are actually not going to be negatively impacted. I think the plan. All along has been to just replace those trees. Um, because the extent of the work that needs to be done along that back boundary. Um, equipment needs to get in between where the trees are and the four foot. Um, trench that would need to be dug for the footer of the, uh, foundation. So, um. The equipment's going to be breaking the tree branches and, uh, damaging the roots and trees and whatever. And while they may not be the most beautiful trees, they are tall and providing screening for the neighbors. So, um, I, uh, also am concerned about the. Uh, the fire truck access, the length of the fire truck. Um, and, uh, it's my opinion that, um, it would have been a simple phone call. To the Fire Marshal's office to find out what trucks this town has. Um, to, um, do the, uh, report that they did for, um, access to the property. And, um, that was not done. So, um. Uh, I envision the ladder truck. I know the ladder truck is. Is big. I envision the ladder truck trying to get into that property. Um, to one of the rear structures and, um, trying to maneuver around cars. That, um, might be parked on either side of the roadway, uh, in a way that just would prevent access altogether. Um, so that's a concern. I'm thinking about the lack of sidewalks and kids trying to get to the bus stop. On days like, uh, this time of year, it's pitch blackout and the kids are waiting for the bus. And people are trying to go, uh, leave for work and. Um, you don't even have sidewalks for the kids within the, the development to, um. To have access, safe access. And then if you end up with a little bit of snow in the roadway. It means the kids are walking that much farther away from the curbs and, um, uh, it just seems to me to be. A, a high risk. High risk area.
Okay, thank you Diane. Any, anyone else about this project? Uh, Andra? Ms. Millard?
A little notes that I had put down, we were going through all these. Meetings is that, um, one of the things is that. When you look at this, there is no really area for anybody to, you have ten feet in between each unit. So that's five feet for each person or persons in each one of those units. They're side by side. They better like each other because they're not going to be able to sit outside on the side of the house. That's the only area that. Or in, well, no, there's not a lot, but there's not a lot of green space for people just to relax and enjoy their life. All I can picture is these people sitting in this house twenty, during half their life, looking at the TV or the wall. They have no area. To enjoy their, their, their free time. They have no place to put a barbecue. The kids have no place to, one of the residents made a comment about, you know, go outside and play in the snow. There's no community, no sense of community here, no. No enjoyment.
Anyone else?
I, I, uh. Holy, uh. Against the fifteen foot. Uh, back property line, uh, with these units, uh. You know, they submitted something tonight. Maybe they shouldn't have, but they submitted the old plan which came in from attorney. Okay, uh, eighteen units, not twenty. Eighteen units. And I think with eighteen units, it probably can be done. Houses can be pulled away from the back property. The redesign a little bit and maybe be done at single family residential. Okay. Uh, just looking at the plan they had before. That was denied, uh, but. They would not at all change their plan. The fifteen foot, uh, back, uh, property was considered every meeting that we had here, I think on this project. The fire service coming through again. Okay, uh, it's a health and welfare thing. Uh, this property does not allow for any. Recreation of, of anything at all on the property. There's no room to put a. Barbecue out on the property. Uh, you know, I mean, it's, it's supposed to be a home. You know, that someone can afford. And have the pleasure of a home. Okay, uh, the way they're set? No, you don't have any backyard. You know, you, you, uh, and, and it's just. Uh, with the water issue, which we don't have settled yet, it was denied with the water, the, the wetlands. And far as I'm concerned, we cannot adopt any plan without wetlands approval. Uh, that's just been my thing for how many years, but you told if we can right now conditionally. Uh, which, uh, I don't feel is right. Wetlands got the first say to me. Uh, just opinion. And, and I just don't see it. And there, there was opportunity. Uh, opportunity. They had. Take that little plan and put it back in front of us. That's opportunity they had. Okay, the, the, the forty-eight, forty-six feet in the back of the properties, I couldn't do that here. Okay, it's not, it's not, it's the same property. It's the same property, okay? But because we denied. It comes back looking like this and no, no budget at all. Okay. Uh. I can't vote for something like that because there's too many variables in it. Uh. You know, I cannot put that those houses fifteen foot away from the bike lot yard. When these people on Holly Court have been having a problem. Before they were there. Okay, with water, okay? Uh, and other things. Now they go have some other, something trudon on their property. Thirty feet, it's not trudon on their property. Okay, and they could put. More, uh, pine trees, double roll, uh, a berm with a double roll of pine, pine trees on that we did. We do in some properties, you know, uh, blocking Holly Court. Holly Court won't see it all. People won't still kind of decks of Holly Court. Okay, uh. It's, it's more. Living, living, people living, uh, you know. You know, it's, it's just, I don't know, understand, I don't understand, uh. The hard-nosed development part of it. It's been.
Okay, uh, June, I think, and then Dave, um.
Yeah, I think my biggest concern comes in with the safety of, um. Fire truck access. I think part of my question to, um. My commissioner next door was that, you know, if, if these homes are close together, if there's a fire, if they need to get. More than one truck in, you have two trucks. If it's a two alarm or a three alarm. How are these trucks going to come in and have access when? I know we've asked for more parking, even if they remove that additional parking in the middle, people are going to park there. Um, because they'll have two cars maybe per home. The garages might be full. They have visitors that come out of town guests. They're going to utilize that parking space and for the emergency access. Of fire equipment to come in and the ease of that spreading from building to building with the close proximity is a real concern.
Brian?
Yeah, Commissioner Zigma, just, you know, he brought back to the attention that this, at the last minute, we got this submittal of the old site plan. Um. And I thought that one was close to making the grade, but you know, we wanted a little bit more as far as, you know, making it a nice place to live. Um. And instead of this application, you, you went in the opposite direction. Um. Of, you know, lower quality of light, uh, losing things like the dog park and that little bit of space behind the house. Those are important things for, you know, at the end of the day, when you want to unwind and relax and, you know, have that, you know, have good mental health. Um, those are important and. Went in the wrong direction.
Yeah. You, yeah, Diane?
Um, just a couple of comments, um. With respect to conflicting information that was presented also, uh, with respect to the parking. Um, the increase in parking that was represented by the applicant, um, to be included in the plan. Um, and the conflicting statement of the, um, Assistant Fire Marshal that. Uh, parking could not be allowed, that that would be designated as a parking lane area.
Bar lane.
Uh, or, I mean, a fire lane area. And, um, then also on the plans, um. On page seven, the, uh, matter that Ms. Alstrand raised, uh, with respect to the conflicting. Uh, setback requirement of, um, fifty feet in that, um, note forty-one that does not. Um. Jive with the plan itself.
So I just want to give you just some quick guidance on Wetlands. Uh, there's a case that goes back some years. Um, that talks about the consideration that you're supposed to give and just the interworking of the commissions. With regard to their respective jurisdiction and duties. So, um, the, the cases are way versus Bloom. It's a nineteen ninety-two appellate court case. Um, and I'm just going to read, uh, some language from it. Uh, as this court has stated regarding the requirement that the zoning commission give due consideration to the report. Produced by the Wetlands Commission, it was not intended to make those decisions interdependent. When the zoning commission receives a copy of the report prepared by the Wetlands Commission. Is not required to review or await judicial review of the validity or invalidity of that commission's final decision. As a precursor to rendering its own decision. This construction of the term final decision is consistent with the function that the Wetlands report was intended to serve. The final decision contained in the Wetlands report is merely one of the many factors the zoning commission must consider in rendering its own decision. Within its own relevant time limits. With regard to due consideration, this is what the court said. Zoning commission must give the Wetlands commission report due consideration. We do not read this as a statutory mandate that the zoning commission's decision be based on the Wetlands report. To afford due consideration is to give such weight or significance to a particular factor. As under the circumstances it seems to merit, and this involves discretion. It cites Black's Law Dictionary. It entails giving such thought or weight to a fact as it merits under all the circumstances of the case. And it cites Valentine's Law Dictionary. There is no question that the term due consideration requires the zoning commission to do more than simply receive the Wetlands report. And give it passing notice. The weight or significance to be accorded that report by the zoning commission depends however. However, on the application before it. How much weight the report should be given is a matter of discretion for the commission. So that's instructive. It's, you know, like I said, the case has been around a long time. That's. Well-established case law. Good.
Yeah, good. Thank you. Um, I, I'm just gonna, anyone else want to? Cause I was waiting, make sure you're all weighed in. Um, you know, I looked at this plan and I think I said. Straight up is that, you know, we've got one point nine acres and we've got twenty units proposed. Uh, which would, which for me was, um, uh, an overreach. Um, I have, we've suggested that we could eliminate the houses within the, um. Roundabout. We've, uh, suggested that we could perhaps, um, bring the homes in. Eliminate maybe, um. A couple of the single families, maybe make duplexes. And we started to redesign, but no matter what. We tried to do to make a better project, to make, uh, a happier community. Again, touching on the fact that there's, you know, no green space, there's no community center, there's no. There's no, there's existing, but there's no living. And there's a difference in that. And, um. And, and I, I, it, no matter what we, our proposals were, it was sort of met with a negative. And without consideration. And, um, and I have to reflect on that and I have to think about, you know. I can propose ways to make the project better. We all can. I just don't see that it's going to happen, what we have in front of us. And, um, I, I'm, it's, you know, that's what I have to say. Anyway, any last deliberations?
Well, one, one last thing and I. Refer to my attorney in front of us. Uh, the other attorney brought. First project into the, the thing tonight by submitting evidence on the first project. Uh, and that's under appeal, right?
Yes, it's.
Yeah, we're not.
Appeal is pending, yes.
And that's not finalized. Is there anything else? Let the judge tell him, okay, build that one. Deny this one. Okay. It's thirty, forty-eight, six feet away from property line. They're appealing it. We give them permission. Okay, build it.
Well.
This one, this one has way too many. Uh. Negatives to it compared to the, the one that we denied. And I, I respect every commissioner in this that, that had their opinions. I respected ev- everyone here, okay, uh. But the first one, after reviewing this one, it's opened my eyes. That the first one. Wasn't what we want. Still wasn't, still not in my mind what we want, not in my vision of what the in, inlay. Zone was supposed to be, not my vision. Uh. But I think it helped the homeowners around the area better, uh, because of setbacks. Uh, now they, on this one, they, they improved the water filtration stuff on this property. They could do it on the first one. Now that improves the water situation, you know, uh. And, 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 you know, I just. To me, uh, the, the way this one's designed, I can't do it because of the safety hazards right here. The roads aren't big enough. The, the, the other ones with the roads are big enough. Trucks can get in there or whatever. Okay, uh. This one just doesn't allow that stuff. Uh. Yeah, what I'd like to see difference in the first one. Yes. What is it? When the two. We're less of two evils is the, the first one. And, uh. I don't think there's a reason why our attorney couldn't say. Okay, build the first one.
Well, remember there were some issues with the first one that the.
Sure, there was issues.
No.
But, but, I mean, the attorney can, the attorney can say. Uh, we, our eyes opened up, the water filtration, this waters, uh, the systems have been.
All right, but.
Then this one or whatever, we could, they kind of add that.
So, so.
Oh, yeah.
So just if.
I don't know.
I don't want to cut you off because it is.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
To the role apply. But I, I mean, you're getting into, you know, a settlement discussion with regard to resolution of that appeal. And I guess, uh, one thing, a- again, you, you need to consider here. Okay, because, because you did go on down a long non-affordable housing application journey with that. That application. Um, I think you've got to consider, you know, whether, uh. You want to potentially conditionally approve, uh, this application. Um, and that is one option. You want to potentially conditionally approve this application, and that is one option to you. Um, one path that you could take, an option for you rather. So, you know, you've you've just closed a public hearing, you have a lot of time, you know, you don't, you don't have to decide this tonight. If that's something you want to give further consideration, they did introduce the last. You know, site plan offered during that application process and. You know, that is part of your evidence as well, so, you know, you can, you can do whatever you'd like to do with regard to that. I want to decide if you want to take some time and think about. You know, potentially conditionally, conditionally approving this application. That you're here to decide tonight, then that's something that you can do, you certainly have the time to do it.
Right.
The next meeting, everyone think.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say I'll make a motion to continue this so that we have an opportunity to give some consideration. To what's been discussed.
Alright, so we have a motion by Ms. Joyce.
That would be continuing the deliberation until your next meeting, which I believe is Thursday, November second, twenty twenty three, at seven PM.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I will second that.
Okay, so a motion by Ms. Joyce, we have a second by Mr. Rogan, do we have further discussion on that? I mean, I'm, the only thing I'm going to say is that I'm I'm not sure what's going to change between now and then, that's, that's the only thing, I mean. I I don't, I just don't know what's going to change.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I agree with you, I. I really feel that the first time we. Put that plan out and we denied it, that was because it came with problems and we saw that and we identified them. And now we're looking at the same plan, has the same problems. I don't think anything's going to change.
Okay. Alright, so I guess we'll vote on the motion. So, the motion is to continue the public hearing.
Continue the.
To the deliberation, excuse me, excuse me, I'm sorry, the deliberation. So all those in favor. Those opposed, aye, so let's do a raise of hand. Yeah.
So, and daily? Andra Miller, she voted and you're voting if you're saying in favor, you're voting in favor of continuing.
Continue.
This, the the aye is in favor of continuing, nay is.
Yeah, and I don't really.
Not in favor. So, June is the yes. Andra Miller. Diane Joyce. From Sigma. Ryan Rogan. Von Beely.
Nay.
And Scott Hamel.
So, so they continue. Okay, alright, the motion carries. Alright, so we'll we'll continue thinking about that until the next meeting, which is the second, alright. And then, and that's it, and so we have a planner or comments, anything?
Oh, yeah, I have a couple of things.
If you, if you don't.
We are posting, we, as you directed. For the November second meeting, we're drafting text for the building square. Issue that was brought up a couple of meetings ago, and I think we're looking for a little more direction with regard to that. As to. What the thoughts are of of how you want that drafted, for the confusion, on the particular lot you made the. Comments on and and made your interpretation on was a corner lot where two fronts. And a rear yard are required, those larger setbacks than any other lot has, and they weren't able to meet the. The building square, fitting in the setback. Commissioner Rogan had commented on. The interpretation, that the wording that had come out, it said. Of setbacks, I think, that had been, that had come out of the language, being, you know, one of the factors that. Led to the interpretation. We also have. The situation where the building square hasn't been met on other. Differently shaped lots that aren't corner lots, but make the narrow lots, not deep lots. And we had one last year. That didn't proceed with, didn't proceed because of that issue, but another one coming before you that has that issue that. Has now been scheduled, but they will be a narrow lot, so it's a matter of. What direction you want to go in and or even keeping the language at all.
In or outside of setbacks and what the exception may be. And whether you want it to be on an exceptional.
I was kind of happy with the way I interpreted it, which I thought made sense, is as long as you can fit a building square. On a lot, you're good to build, but that still means that all of the buildings, yeah, all the setbacks still have to. Yeah, it's love to be, exactly, it's love to be met, so whether it's a shed shed or the garage or the house, those all still have to meet the setbacks. But as long as you have a building square, you can still build on the lot.
With the square not meeting the setbacks necessarily, it's more about the.
You could fit a square anywhere.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, he's saying, he's saying not in the setbacks.
Not in the setback, that's what, that's what we decided. No, the house was in the setbacks, the building square was not.
Well, it's a matter of whether you're saying in the setbacks means you're encroaching in the setback or whether you're meeting the setback. So, that particular one, proposed house. And in order to obtain a permit, they'll have to comply with the setback requirements from all four sides. The three sides in that case, really. But the building square does not comply with a setback.
Yeah.
Encroaches into the setback area.
We just weren't really sure, I mean, which really where you were going.
Yeah, that's kind of how I.
Actually heard a little bit. Oh, we were.
Saw, I saw that building square.
So just slightly.
Into the buffer, however, the house was placed. Outside of the buffer, so for me, it was like, well, I mean, it was. Didn't really matter to me because I saw the house was respecting the buffer, and that was the most.
That makes sense. So the square can be anywhere.
And and again, we can draft something and then during the hearing, as you vet it, you can decide, you know, we would rather use it as a waiver. Or we would rather, you know, or what the exceptions might be, but we've got direction, I think that gives us the direction to to. Draft the language posted by tomorrow. Monday, by Monday, really, and then the other thing I have, and I really, I didn't do enough research on this yet. But we have, I'm concerned with the solar fields. Projects that have been approved by the sighting council while, because they have a set of standards for. Solar installations that where the zoning does not apply, but we have regulations. In in the Berlin zoning regulations, there are regulations specific to ground mounted solar. That relate to only being on properties with the. With a use that's utilizing that energy. And. One in particular that the permits are coming through for now, because the sighting councils has approved them. Is on the New Britain landfill, and that was discussed when they got the fill permit. Although this first application we're seeing is actually for their site on the south side of Deming Road, not where their fill permit is for. And I'm concerned with that conflict and haven't been able to vet it yet completely through what the state regulation calls for. But we do have our regulations in.